Good morning, everyone. It is showtime in Las Vegas City Council. I just got that off of our city clerk, I think. Okay, please turn off your cellphones. I will do mine, thank you. Okay, the October 3, 2012 meeting of the City Council is called to order. This meeting is properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. These proceeds are being video-recorded as well as presented live on KCLV, Cable Channel 2, and are closed-caption for hearing-impaired viewers. Please note, some customers of Cox Communication who do not have a cable box may view this meeting on Digital Channel 89.5. The council meeting, as well as all other KCLV programming, may be viewed on the Internet at www.kclv.tv. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV and the web the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 PM. Ooh, as the presidential debate is going on, I think we will fail. Which will be over, ours or theirs?
Theirs will be over.
Okay, thank you. Therefore, we can tune in, and also on Friday at 4:00 AM, Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 7:00 AM, and the following Monday at 1:00 PM. This building is protected by state-of-the-art fire-detection-and-suppression sprinkler system. If the alarm should activate during today's meeting, please evacuate using the exits at the back of the chambers out to the mezzanine. Proceed out the double doors to the terrace and down the back staircase. Once outside, assemble on the northeast corner of the street from City Hall at Lewis and First Street. Employees wearing safety vests or are city marshals will inform you when it is safe to re-enter the building. For public comment related to the items on the agenda, citizen participation and public hearing items, we have available a speaker card which you may complete and submit to the city clerk. Cards are available online, in the clerk's office, or at the rear of the chambers. If you do not submit a card, it does not prevent you from speaking under public comment, citizen participation, or specified public hearing items. If there's anyone present today who has a need for hearing-impaired equipment, please see the city clerk's staff up front here. If you parked in the parking garage across the street and did not receive a validation ticket as you entered the chambers, please exit to your right and then see the security personnel at the entrance. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation given this morning by Reverend Linda Kelly, Mountain View Presbyterian Church, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us join our hearts in prayer. God of all being, friend of the earth, ruler of dawn and dusk, we give thanks for this day. We give thanks for the glorious future that lies ahead, and for every step of progress that will be shaped by decisions made today. We give thanks that the past need not fetter the future, yet as dazzling changes rush at us like meteors in the dark, we give thanks for things that remain fixed and familiar. We ask this morning a special blessing on this meeting, on our mayor and our elected city council, upon the words heard and said, upon decisions made, and on visions cast. May they have the courage to act upon their convictions, and the confidence at day's end, they know they have acted well. These things we pray. Amen.
Amen. And we will continue on with the ceremonial portion. Good morning again. You moved. What is amazing is the color coordination of our city council. This side is in the tan and olive, and this side is in the gray and the black. Very interesting, very fashionable. Well, I'm wearing both. Oh, see how smart you are. Okay, everyone, this is the ceremonial portion of the agenda. Before we get to our items, I wanted to make sure I brought attention to the fact that Fire Prevention Week kicks off on Sunday. Our Las Vegas Fire and Rescue Department has done an excellent job over the years educating the public about fire prevention, which has saved countless lives and properties. From inspections to providing smoke alarms and offering classes, our fire department, led by our wonderful Chief Mike Myers, is always working to prevent fires. Las Vegas Fire and Rescue members will be visiting schools and businesses this week to promote fire safety. All fire stations in the city of Las Vegas will hold an open house on Saturday, October 13, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. For more fire prevention information, including videos and classes, please visit the city of Las Vegas website, www.lasvegasnevada.gov. And watching the news this morning on one of the national TV stations, I learned that many of us have the type of fire-detection systems that you go to the Home Depot or wherever you shop, and you buy the one that you fix to the ceiling. And what was reported this morning, and perhaps Chief Myers will address it at some point with us, that some of them don't go off for 36 minutes when you have a fire, a certain type of smoke fire. While you may be cooking, they go off immediately, there's a difference there when there's an iron or something left on another part of the house. So, I mean, you really need to Google this and find out what are the best fire-detection units to put in your house. Chief, is that fact? Okay, so what's the recommendation they do? I mean, I think you need to come up here if you would address this. I was appalled, because we have them throughout our house, and if we had a two-story house and they were... How would you know something was going on downstairs?
So, yeah, obviously, as technology increases, the majority of older homes have fantastic smoke detectors for smoke detection, and heat detection is the wave of the future. And there are other elements, as we are able to detect things, they build detectors for them. So, it's always good, every 10 years to... Obviously, every six months to a year, replace the batteries in your smoke detectors. Every 10 years, please look for new technology to replace those types of smoke detectors that are in your homes. Just be aware of emerging technology. Always have two ways out of the home, and look for those escape routes. And I think that's something everybody should be aware of. Fire doesn't affect many of us in our lives every day, and something... However, when it does, it's devastating. So, please, please take an opportunity to follow the mayor's suggestions and look out for opportunities to increase your safety.
Thank you very much. He's wonderful. But sadly, to last weekend, we lost one of our own in our family to fire. Henry Jackson, Henry Hank Jackson, had been in our maintenance sweeping crew for more than 27 years, and he had been recognized as one of our employees of the month. He and his son were killed in an accidental fire last Thursday, and I'd like to ask you all to please join me in a moment of silence in remembrance of Hank Jackson. Thank you, and I know you all join with me and council, sending our prayers and condolences to the Jackson family, and it was a tragic loss. So, for our first ceremonial item today, Mayor Pro Tem Anthony will recognize the October Citizen of the Month.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, everyone. Good morning, nice to see you all here. Like the mayor said, it is my honor to recognize the Citizen of the Month for the city of Las Vegas, and I have selected one of my Ward 4 residents, and that's Wayne Two. And when I spoke to Wayne a couple of weeks ago about this, I don't think he was too happy. He's really not the kind of guy that wants recognition, doesn't really think he needs recognition, just kind of goes through life, trying to make Las Vegas a great place to live. And I told him I was going to recognize him anyway, and I wasn't even sure if he was going to show up this morning. So, he is here. Wayne, would you please come up here and give him a nice round of applause? Let me tell you a little bit about Wayne. He's a... He's gone through the undergraduate and graduate programs at Brigham Young University. He is the chief executive officer for the Clark County Credit Union, and in the '80s, the credit unions and savings and loans in this country were having a very, very difficult time. And in 1986, Wayne is credited with rescuing the Clark County Credit Union from failure, and by 2001, he had boosted its assets to 262 million, which allowed the credit union to give a dividend to its members of $3 million. So, he's credited with saving that institution. Wayne's also a small-business owner here in Las Vegas. He owns a auto body shop. He's owned it for 10 years, and he employs between 25 and 30 employees, and he is working on opening up his second body shop, where he's going to put another 25 to 30 employees to work in this valley. So, he's working to put people to work here. Wayne is also a member of the Vegas Valley Angels, which is a group of dedicated individuals providing capital for early and mid-stage entrepreneurial companies, and their primary focus is based on southern Nevada. The members of the Vegas Valley Angels have extensive experience in founding, building, managing, and financing companies in a wide variety of industries, and they also mentor and coach new entrepreneurs and businesses. He's a businessman, he works hard, but his family is just as important, and probably more important than that. Up here with him is Patrice's wife. He has four children who are scattered all over the United States. Wayne serves on the board of the Howard Center, which is the principal sponsor of the World Congress on Families. In December 2000, Wayne took his family to a small village in Mexico for one week, so his kids could see how other people in the world live, and see if he could help some folks out. Wayne and his family's projects included building a water filtration system and building stoves that allowed the members of the village to cook inside their homes rather than outdoors. Wayne also serves on the executive board of Las Vegas Area Council of Boy Scouts of America, and Wayne is a recipient of the Silver Beaver Award, which in Boy Scouts is a lifetime achievement award, and from what Councilman Ross tells me, that is a big deal. Wayne is also the president of the Lone Mountain Stake for the LDS Church, and has been president for the last nine years. So, with that, it is absolutely my honor to recognize Wayne Two as a Citizen of the Month for the city of Las Vegas, and I have a plaque to present him. Thank you, Councilman Ross. Wayne, there's a plaque for you, and we have a sign over here with your name on it that will be someplace outside of City Hall on Main Street, right on Main Street, for a month, so you can bring your kids in, and one at a time and get a picture taken. So, Wayne, congratulations.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. I guess I'm honored to have this honor. I think there are many great men in the city of Las Vegas who probably are more deserving than I am. When my wife and I and our four kids, three kids then, moved to Las Vegas in 1986, we anticipated we'd be here for five years, looking to go to greener and more hospitable climate. After searching for several years, we finally decided we're not going to get there. There's not many places with better opportunity, better business, and better proximity to great places, so we planted ourselves here, and became permanent, and tried to do what we could. We've had the opportunity to associate with great men and women, including members and volunteers and staff of Clark County Credit Union. Many of them got word today and somehow found their way here, and I guess I thank them for being here. More dedicated than I am in service to those, my wife, who a couple of years ago was honored as the Nevada Mother of the Year, and put in a plug here, she's hoping to continue that service as a school board trustee here this next year. At any rate, we thank you for this honor and commend you for your continued leadership, making this city a great, diverse, and dynamic place to live. Thank you, Wayne.
And thinking about Mrs. Two, do remember to vote. It's coming up soon, and I think we can vote online, register online for another couple of days. Three more days? Okay. For our next item, I'd like to invite our fabulous city planning director, Flynn Fag, up here to join us at the podium. Today, we're recognizing Community Planning Month. Right up your alley, isn't it? Oh, he's on the gray and black and purple tie side. Could you please move out of the way, Mr. Councilman Beers? All right, come this side. No, 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 the purples have to go together. This is an annual celebration of the benefits of properly planning our communities. And planning benefits our communities by maintaining neighborhood character, preserving parks and open spaces, determining where buildings, businesses, homes, and roads will be located, and reducing the impacts of bad development. Of course, our planning department has been very involved in improving the services that the city offers to residents and businesses by creating a one-stop shop for planning, licensing, and permitting needs at our Development Services Center located at 333 North Rancho, just at the 95. We want to make it as convenient as possible for people to do business with the city, and in some services, we're even online. The Nevada chapter of the American Planning Association is celebrating Community Planning Month by holding its 40th annual conference here at City Hall on October 11th and 12th. Flynn, thank you and your staff for all that you do to make Las Vegas a better place in which to live, work, and play, and I want to present you today with this proclamation and ask you to make some comments for us. Do we have a proclamation for this wonderful man, and all that he does? Community Planning Month, and is the... Are these meetings open to the public on October 11th and 12th, or no?
They're for planners, but we'd more than love to have members of the public join us for some of the events that we have scheduled next week. Mayor, I'd just like to thank you for the proclamation. The American Planning Association designates October as National Community Planning Month and gives us the opportunity to recognize the importance of planning to our communities, but more importantly, the efforts of our elected officials, our planning commissioners, our public and private sector planners, and most importantly, to our city residents who support and participate in our planning processes and the development of plans for their neighborhoods and for the city. I'd also like to recognize at this time, three city staff members who hold elected positions with the American Planning Association. If I could call Fred Solis, Marco Velata, and Robert Summerfield to come join me up here.
How about a round of applause?
Fred Solis holds a national position with the American Planning Association. He's the Secretary-Treasurer for the Latinos and Planning Division, and has held that post since 2008. Next, we have Robert Summerfield, who is the Vice President of the Nevada chapter of the American Planning Association, and has held that position since 2010. And then Marco Velata, who is with the Office of Sustainability. He currently is the Secretary of the Southern Section of the Nevada chapter of the American Planning Association. I just wanted to recognize the three of them for their efforts in advancing the profession and the time that they give and service that they give. Mayor, members of council, thank you very much.
And I'd like to read this, because it is, even though it sort of reiterates what we've said, but the proclamation on behalf of the council and myself. This proclamation, "Whereas changes constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places. And whereas community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work, live, and play. And whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents, all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community. And whereas the full benefits of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand and support and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation. And whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States and its territories. And whereas the American Planning Association and its professional institute, the American Institute of Certified Planners endorse National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight the contributions, sound planning, and plan implementation to make the quality of our settlements and environments wonderful. And whereas the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to recognize publicly the participation and dedication of the members of the planning commission who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of our city of Las Vegas, I, the mayor, the city of Las Vegas proudly proclaim October of 2012 Community Planning Month, and I ask you all to give these wonderful men and their leader another wonderful round of applause. Thank you, Flynn. Thank you so much. Whoops. Thank you, congratulate. Okay, now we're going to have a little fun. I think I almost had a chance to have that little fun down here, but we have a special guest with us today. Leif Erikson, the man who discovered America. God, I thought I was old. So, here we are, Leif Erikson. He and the members of the Vegas Viking Lodge of the Sons of Norway are here with us today. I would like to invite Leif and the Sons of Norway to join us up here at the podium as we proclaim... Oh, my goodness, what a handsome man, and you're standing on the right side of the podium. I think he fits better with this side than this side. I would like... And the Sons of Norway, here we all come, how beautiful. Oh, wow. As we proclaim Tuesday, October 9, Leif Erikson Day in the city of Las Vegas. No European had set foot in North America until Leif Erikson did so about the year 995. For the 52,000... Wow, 52,000 Scandinavians in southern Nevada, his legacy is well worth celebrating. Leif's determination, bravery, and courage are indeed model traits for all Americans as we celebrate and recognize him. Now, I would like to introduce Christian Shoyan from the Sons of Norway to say a few I guess our representative can't talk.
I'll speak on his behalf. Good morning, everyone. My name is Christian from Sons of Norway, the Vegas Lodge, and I'm here to say a few words. First of all, on behalf of Sons of Norway, the Vegas Lodge, and also all the Scandinavians living here in Vegas, I want to say thank you for making this day official October 9, making it the Leif Erikson Day throughout the city of Vegas. And secondly, I also want to announce a drawing competition that we are arranging through Sons of Norway to nurture the Viking traits that Leif Erikson stood for, which is imagination, vision, collaboration, and fearlessness. So, this is meant for the children, grade 1 to 5, throughout Las Vegas. And in addition, we also plan to go out and speak to the classes and the children, so we can explain more what Leif Erikson stood for, and also give them a little information on history. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And we have a proclamation as October 9, 2012, Leif Erikson Day in the city of Las Vegas, and ask all citizens to join me in recognizing that this day is about the discovery of America, and Erikson being a role model with his bravery, determination, and courage, which are characteristics that everyone should strive for. This year's Leif Erikson Day is especially meaningful since 2012 marks the 20th anniversary of the Las Vegas Viking Lodge of the Sons of Norway. And so, we congratulate you all, and I must tell you, Leif, our third son is named Eric because we loved the Vikings, always. So, I mean, really and truly, that's why we did name him Eric, but it's with a C. So, congratulate you and thank you for all that you do for our community.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. How long?
I just moved here like a couple of months ago to Las Vegas. And do you like it? I love it.
Wonderful. I just asked how long he had lived here. Couple of months, and...
I love it.
All right. Thank you so much, and congratulations. Great outfit. And now, I will turn the microphone and podium over to Councilman Coffin, who's going to recognize another local heritage group.
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, this was not intended in the spirit of competition somehow, but I think the Vikings got wind of the fact that the Italian-Americans were coming today and decided that they'd show their horns, and in any event, they're here, along with their beautiful ladies. Whereas, the Italian-Americans brought along the old guys, you know, that hang out at the club, which is basically what we're here to honor today, the club, not the competition between the Italians and the Vikings and the Spaniards about who discovered this continent, because the indigenous have it all over everybody, you know, the 10 or 20 million of those who are here wondering what in the heck these folks were doing in their little boats planting flags on the shore that they already were there. So, however, when people plant a flag in Las Vegas, and it's a little business, a little place to hang out, a wonderful, warm, inviting little club, the Italian-Americans beat everybody. Almost, well, 50-some years ago, the Italian-American Club was founded over there on East Sahara, and it still is there today, and that's who we're honoring because of their stability, their resilience, their insistence on staying in Ward 3, the best city in the city of Las Vegas, best part of Las Vegas. Here we have honoring them for their charitable contributions. With us today, Angelo Casaro, he's the president, come on up, along with board members Armon Merlusi, he's the Vice President, Nino Falico, Dario Baso, board members John Bonjorno, Sam Colura, Sally Cronet, or Cornet, perhaps, Ron Failla, Joe Falico, John Fallius, Frank Tavanes, and Nick Montana. You're all up here, and I probably didn't butcher your name. This Mexican has a hard time with Italian names. It's close, but not quite. One of the founders was a pioneer here in the city of Las Vegas, in the modern city, Al Bossi, who I remember as our city engineer, because as a child playing golf at the municipal golf course, Al Bossi had a lot to do with how that golf course survived, and he used to come on out and visit with them. So, over the years, this club has been host to many family and public events, and they've been graced with the presence of many stars who have gone there for conviviality and socializing with the brotherhood, like Frank Sinatra, Tony Bennett, Dino Martin, and others. Yes, on East Sahara. Well, Monday, October 8, is Columbus Day, and therefore, it's fitting that the Italian-American Club of Southern Nevada is hereby recognized today for fostering an active interest in social, charitable, and civic will for all of its members, and for encouraging active participation in education, and so many other things here in southern Nevada. We want to congratulate them for helping us for 52 years, and we wish them another 52 years of success. I like going there. The drinks are not expensive, the food is nice fare, and it is sustain... It will sustain you. Many little clubs meet there, because it's one of the few places you can go in and not come out broke. So, I say, patronize the Italian-American Club. Angelo, would you like to say a few words on behalf of the organization?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor, City Council. We appreciate the recognition of our club. We have been there, as you said, 52 years. The organization started out as just a place to hang out, and it's pretty much what it is still today. We've contributed a lot of nice things to the city, to the community, and we appreciate on behalf of the Italian-American Club, all of our paisans, the recognition that we're getting here today. It is difficult to sustain an organization 52 years, and we kind of like to take this opportunity to reach out to all our paisans, where there's about 140,000 Italian-Americans in Las Vegas, to join us and come down and check out the club, and look at us on our website at www... Look at us on our website at www.iacvegas.com, our membership application. We also have membership available for non-Italians. And some of the things that Councilmen talked about is we've had all kinds of events over there, and it does go back to people like Sinatra and DiMaggio and all the different people, you know, and still today you don't know who's going to be there. But we have meeting rooms over there, the banquet hall, that different organizations meet, and our restaurant, our chefs, everybody are wonderful. We'd like to say again, thank you for the recognition, and on behalf of our members, our board of directors over here, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Angelo. And I will now read the proclamation from the city. We, the mayor and city council of Las Vegas, are honored to pay special tribute to the Italian-American Club of Southern Nevada on behalf of the city of Las Vegas and the state of Nevada. And whereas the Italian-American Club of Southern Nevada is a venerated 52-year-old institution through the efforts of Al Bossi, its principal founder, and which is located at Ward 3, city of Las Vegas. Whereas the city of Las Vegas recognizes the Italian-American Club of Southern Nevada's active role in creating better neighborhoods through their charitable participation. And whereas the city of Las Vegas recognizes that the Italian-American Club of Southern Nevada continues to support programs that focus on education and cultural betterment to its members and their families. And whereas the Italian-American Club of Southern Nevada continues to thrive through the efforts of Angelo Casaro, the president, Armon Merlusi, vice president, Nino Felico, Secretary Dario Bosso, Treasurer, and the Board of Directors, John Bonjorno, Sam Colura, Sally Cornet, Ron Failla, I hope I've got it reasonably close. Thank you. Joe Felico, John Faullis, Frank Tavanes, and Nick Montana. And whereas we, therefore we, the mayor and city council, the city council of the city of Las Vegas, in honor of the Italian-American Club of Southern Nevada, proudly proclaim October 3rd, 2012, as Italian-American Club of Southern Nevada Day. Thank you and congratulations, everybody. Proudly display it. A lot of pretty pictures on the wall over there. Want to visit Las Vegas of the 50s and 60s? Go to the Italian-American Club. You're very welcome.
Thank you, Councilman Coffin. And for our next item, Councilman Ross is going to recognize Dwarfism Awareness Month and talk about an annual conference that's coming to our great city. Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much. And October is such a great month for a number of reasons. It's funny, Councilman Coffin, I was actually a dishwasher at the Italian-American Club when I was in high school. I wasn't very good. I only lasted a few weeks, so we won't go into that. Today's a very special day. We've got some very special people with us today. As a matter of fact, I'm happy to recognize October as Dwarfism Awareness Month. And with me, who's going to help me do that, is Val Burgett. Val, would you come up here with me, please? Val and I have gone to, gee, Val, elementary school, I mean, all the way back in the day. Val's a very dear friend of my wife's and mine, and Valerie's going to help me do this. Little People of America is a nonprofit organization which provides support, resources, and information to individuals with dwarfism and their families. And Val, we've got some special guests with us today. Can we bring them up here? All of you involved with this great organization, come on up here and get, stretch across the front here and get a pictures with the mayor. Oh, you are adorable. You want to introduce them, Val?
This is Destiny Whitefield. And this is Ava Fegola, Rosie Whitefield, Teresa Braun, she is our treasurer, Brandon Hamilton, Kate Gruy. And then we have Josh, and Josh, and Lisa. And then we have Lisa is our treasurer, and her little daughter Katie, and Gary Braun.
How wonderful.
And these are just a few members of our local chapter. We have been a chapter in Las Vegas since 2008. Sadly to say, there was not a Little People of America chapter in Las Vegas until I went to a national conference and came back and started one here in Las Vegas. I have an 18-year-old daughter who is a little person. She's off at college. Otherwise, she would be here with us. So, but, thank you.
I hope she's watching this online because she can see this online and then watch the reruns. So, well, let me say a few words about it. Now, this is an exclusive organization. For membership in the Little People of America, it is limited to people that are four foot, 10 inches, and under, or those with a diagnosed form of dwarfism, their families, or those who have interest in issues relating to dwarfism. Little People of America is the only dwarfism support organization that includes all 200 forms of dwarfism. Little People of America was formally started in 1957 when late actor Billy Barde called upon people of short stature to join him for a get-together in Reno, Nevada. That's very interesting. That original meeting of 21 people evolved into Little People of America, a group of which, as of 2012, has more than 6,800 members. Little People of America has 73 local chapters which meet regularly, as well as an annual week-long conference that's going on right now in the great city of Las Vegas, correct?
Well, it's a weekend.
It's the weekend.
They have an annual, they have a national convention that is the first weekend, July, every year in various different cities. And then each chapter, we have a fall and a spring regional, and Las Vegas is hosting our Fall 2012 Regional this weekend at the Red Rock Hotel. So we're expecting, our district is Chapter 12, and it constitutes California and Nevada. And there are six different chapters that constitute that. So we're expecting around 250 people this weekend from our district and a few other friends that are coming across the country.
That's great.
Because they want to visit Vegas, so.
Val, would you share with everybody some contact information? Because perhaps there's some folks out there that don't know about this great organization. If you can give some contact information for our viewers right now, that would be great.
Sure. You can go on lpaonline.org, and then there is a section that will say different chapters. So you just pick the city that you live in, and then it will put you in contact with each local chapter. So we are under District 12, so if you go under District 12, it will fall under Las Vegas, and then my email address is on there. And so if anybody's in Las Vegas that doesn't know we have an existing chapter, you can contact us through that.
Awesome. Awesome. That is great. Thank you all for coming down, Mayor. Well, right now, we, the mayor, and the Las Vegas City Council proudly proclaim October 3rd, 2012, as Dwarfism Awareness Month in the city of Las Vegas. Congratulations to all of you. Thank you very much for coming down. Give them a great big round of applause. Can we get pictures, Mayor?
And we also have, and we... We also have a good luck mayor chip, which is about good luck and good health, but not in your mouth, ever. So I'm going to give them to you to make sure everybody has, including your wonderful supports.
Thank you all. Thank you all. Thanks for coming down, Val. Good to see you.
And thank you for joining us. And for our final item, Councilman Ricky Barlow is going to recognize some residents of Ward 5 who have gone above and beyond in supporting their wonderful community. Councilman Barlow?
Thank you, Mayor, and good morning, everyone. I am pleased to stand before you today to recognize a young man who has done so much, not only in Ward 5, but throughout the city of Las Vegas. And at this time, I would like to bring forward Mr. Calvin Futrell. Please come forth, Calvin. Yeah, you could have brought your scooter, too. I want to make sure that you're good. Okay, well, we'll hold on to the side of the podium here, if you don't mind. I've had the pleasure of working alongside Calvin for many years and was so moved by his recent efforts of cleaning up the community that I saw fit to recognize him before the mayor and council here today. Calvin exemplifies tremendous citizenship amongst the residents of Las Vegas, and it doesn't always pertain to events that he does in Ward 5. He has done events in Wards 3 and Wards 1 as well. Calvin's spirit remains high, and his efforts are tireless as he works hard to unify every community he encounters for seniors and children alike. Mr. Futrell is one of the few individuals that calls upon my office to wish my staff and I the best of luck at our upcoming events. And though he is often wheelchair-bound, he is always offering his support in one way or another. One of the most admirable acts of Calvin is his willingness to give. One thing that I can share with you, the more that you give, the more God continues to give to you, and for that, you have been a true blessing, not only to the members of Ward 5, but to the city of Las Vegas as a whole. Should he encounter a homeless person, he is happy to share what he has or include them with his daily activities. His passion is the youth and the future of a stronger Las Vegas community is what he shared with me. Calvin Futrell, I thank you for your ongoing spirit, and I'm happy to pronounce you as one of the Ward 5 heroes of the day. And so for that, I would like to submit to you a certificate on behalf of the city. And also, Mayor, if you don't mind, I would like for you to pin Calvin with the city of Las Vegas lapel pin before Calvin takes the microphone. All right, well, there you go. Thank you, Mayor. And Calvin, if you will please share a few words.
Yes. First of all, I would like to invite two people who is very supportive to me in my efforts in the community. One is a commander for the Downtown Command, Captain Collins. And also, I would like to invite up with me is the branch manager for the Las Vegas Library Branch located 833 North Las Vegas Boulevard, and that would be Theron Mist. Both of these gentlemen in individual ways helped me out with the kids and the community. That's my priority, is our children and the community. I fight very hard for these kids to stay in school, to read, to do their math. And with the branch of, with the library, I have 77 kids registered with library cards, which Theron works very hard with. And Captain Collins also worked in the community and informed his officers when they see a group of kids to stop, talk with them, see what their concerns are, what their needs are. But please, everyone throughout Las Vegas, let's take more time out with our children in the communities to help them with their reading, to help bring back the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, the Cub Scouts, and just to be good neighbors to the children. And that is my wish. I enjoy receiving this, but the babies is my priority. That's more important to me than anything in the world. And the city council has helped me, Councilman Barlow, oh my God. I met this guy in the year 2000, and starting in 2001, he started helping me out in the community. And on Thanksgiving, he makes sure he brings back some dinners to help out the needy in my neighborhood. Christmas, this guy surprised me. He'd just come with big bags of toys, and I'd just pass the toys out to the children. So Ricky Barlow has been an angel on my shoulder, and I appreciate the association and the friendship that we have over the years. And Mayor Goodman, she's also been there. Her husband, he's been one that I've been kind of fighting back and forth with, in a good way. But the Honorable Mayor Goodman, she's also has her phone line open to help me out. So thank you all. I really appreciate it. Thank you, Captain Collins, and also Mr. Mist. And God, it feels good. This is great. Thank you.
Thank you for all that you do, Calvin. For the seniors and the children in our community, all throughout the city of Las Vegas. And thank you also very much for your continued support in all the endeavors to improve the quality of life of all of our residents. Congratulations, Calvin. All right. Love you too, man. Thank you.
And before we take a brief recess, Councilman in his purple and purple has something. He's electrifying today, trust me. He has some remarks.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I would be remiss if I did not congratulate my daughter Jessica and her husband Alan for having their fourth son last Friday, which makes Kelly and I now have 10 grandchildren and one more coming in November. So congratulations to Jessica and her family. Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, that's so nice. Congratulations, Jessica and family. All right, we're going to take a brief 10-minute recess, so we'll be back here. I can't even see my watch. Oh, in 10 minutes. Thank you.[1521.15]
Thank you. Could you be good enough to give those to City Clerk?
Good morning. Dick Guyer, eighty-two sixty Hilton Head Court, President ATB, the Arts District Neighborhood Association, but also for many years, the leading person on the Las Vegas, I mean, excuse me, the Sculptor Plaza on Boulder Avenue behind the Arts Factory. I came here in reference to new bill number fifty-nine. Just to be on the record, this is unlike other parks in the city which are designed for children and families to play in. It is basically a concrete and stone enclosed place that was designed to hold a very large and enormously popular sculptor piece which we were unable to fund. My point today is that I see that it's a location specifically designated and posted for the use by the director, and I would like to be sure that the events, many different types of events can be held there, and that they are allowed to have alcoholic beverages, to be able to vend goods or services, and the noise disturbance rules that are in the Arts District be in effect. This was to be a magnet for the area, for its development. Now, of course, we do not have the sculptor piece, so we'd like to have as many events in there as possible. I've met with Karen Duddleston. I understand how quickly you can now apply for the use of this park, and I hope that it will be considered, and perhaps it already has that alcohol and vending and what have you, which would be necessary for events in that park.
And Mr. Guyer, do you want to speak and address it again at item fifty-nine?
It's a new bill. It doesn't allow speaking at that time.
Okay. It's just right. Thank you very much.
And off the subject, thank you very much for a quick start. From the bottom of my heart, it means so much to the Arts District.
We have a great, great staff. Thank you. And please state your name and good morning.
My name is Anthony Hardy, one-two-Teresa David. I want to address items fifty-two, fifty-three, and fifty-four. One of them had Mr. Jobbitt, the attorney. Mr. Jobbitt, sir, the one that's got you concerned. Is it transportation?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, can you give me a little information, sir?
The wants me to respond. I'll be happy to, but in brief, we moved the Transportation Center to a new location. It has a new name. So what we did is we took the old name out of the code, put the new name in, and made all those replacements to reflect the new Bonneville Transportation Center.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Mayor, and the other one is, well, transportation with one. Oh, let's see. Okay. The others I'll just pass on, but they are eligible for adoption at this meeting, so they are items that is discussable. I'll pass on the other two. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, two-forty North Nineteenth Street. Item number forty-one. I totally understand that the schools have to be properly funded, and we have to get a program in which they are. But if you go back, think back between twenty and twenty-five, twenty and twenty-two years ago, right on there, when Brian Cram was superintendent, there was a bond issue that was about to be retired, and they came before the voters and they said, "If you allow us to continue with that mill levy," that they would never again come before the voters and ask for any money. I want you to remember that. And it's been a constant, and if you remember when they were going to build the twenty-seven schools or that, and how much of that money was wasted. They never put an accounting on that money and that. And my problem with the school district has always been that that money is, it seems to just go into a general fund and just disappear. And it just makes me angry. It really makes me angry that they tell us one thing, and then bam, the new superintendent comes back in, and right before the people again asking for money. And again, I understand that the schools need to be funded, but I want them to quit lying to us. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now, let's see. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Hearing none. We'll move on to item number twelve. Business item for possible action. Any items from this morning's session that the council staff or applicant wished to be stricken, tabled, withdrawn, or held in advance to a future meeting may be brought forward and act upon at this time. Councilman Anthony?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number twenty-three, agreement number one-one, one-five-three-four-one-zero-five, LED construction manager at-risk agreement for the Development Services Center upgrades. Three-three-three North Rancho Drive, staff has asked that be stricken. And item number forty-six in the ban site and review of conditions on a reflexology establishment license. Liming Jing doing business as Superior Reflexology, two-two-two-one Paradise Road. The applicant has asked that be withdrawn without prejudice, and that's my motion.
Thank you very much. If there's a motion, please vote. And please post. Thank you. Motion carries. Item number thirteen. For possible action to approve the final minutes by reference at the regular city council meeting of September nineteenth, two thousand and twelve. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote. And please post. Thank you. That motion also carries. We will now move on to items, the consent agenda. Items fourteen through forty, with the removal of twenty-three, which was stricken, on the consent agenda are considered to be routine or recommended for approval by the departments, and may be enacted one motion. Are there any items the council wishes to bring forward? Hearing none. I would entertain a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items, number fourteen through forty, except for item twenty-three.
Thank you. This motion, please vote. And please post. Thank you. That motion carries. We'll move on to agenda item number forty-one.
Mayor, before we do?
Yes, please.
May I just make a quick announcement with your permission?
Absolutely.
Thank you. I just want to point out for the audience today that if you recognize that the foyer lights in the front of the building are pink, it is in recognition of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I just wanted to make that, point that out, that that's one of our ways of recognizing Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Under our administrative agenda, what, number forty-one, report from a Clark County School District representative regarding a proposal by CCSD to levy a special elective tax to finance capital projects for schools. This is in all wards. And good morning, Mr. Olivas.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. For the record, Ted Olivas, Director of Administrative Services. I'm joined today by Joyce Haldeman with the school district, who's going to give you a brief report. What I'd like to do is give you a brief background. If you recall, back in June, you approved a resolution that approved the school board's intent to request approval from the Debt Management Commission to levy a special elective tax for financing some of their capital projects. It was for a defined period, which was six years. The day after your approval, they did go to the Debt Management Commission, and they approved that proposal, and it will be on the ballot in November, the ballot question. Today, Joyce is going to provide an update as to the progress of that proposal, and she has a few handouts, which I believe you have. There should be one that looks like this, and then a list of projects for your review. And with that, I'll turn it over to Joyce.
Thank you very much, and welcome, Ms. Haldeman. We saw you on television. You did a very good job.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity of being here today. I'm Joyce Haldeman, the Associate Superintendent of the Community and Government Relations Division for the Clark County School District. And we do very much appreciate your support as we've gone through this process so far to get the question on the ballot. You know that it was rather a rocky road for us this time around, but it will be questioned, too, on the ballot, and we are beginning to make sure people are aware of it in the community. I wanted to make sure that you were aware of the impact that it would have on the city of Las Vegas. And so if you might, if you'll indulge me, let me just share with you a little bit of information. I listened to the public speaker who made comment about the previous bond campaigns that the Clark County School District has had. I've been involved in those campaigns since nineteen eighty-five, and so I'm well aware of the comments that were made to the public and the opportunities that we've provided as we've gone through the years. When you take a look at the series of bond campaigns that we've had since nineteen eighty-eight through the nineties, there were a series of bond campaigns, and those bond campaigns that were all approved by the public approved, or gave us the ability to build one-hundred-and-two new schools. So from nineteen eighty-eight to nineteen ninety-eight, one-hundred-and-two new schools. Then in nineteen ninety-eight, and I think that is the bond campaign that the gentleman was referring to, we had the ability to run a ten-year campaign, a ten-year bond, that was estimated to generate about three-point-five billion dollars. And the promise was not made that we would never come back, but the promise was made that we wouldn't come back for ten years. And so that was a campaign that was to last from nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand and eight. With those dollars, we generate, we built one-hundred-and-twenty additional new schools. So when you add those two numbers together, one-hundred-and-twenty and one-hundred-and-two, that's two-hundred-and-twenty-two schools that the Clark County School District has built since nineteen eighty-eight. That's a phenomenal number of schools. And if you are fortunate enough that you live in a zip code, that your child attends one of those two-hundred-and-twenty-two schools that were built in the last twenty-five years, life is pretty good for you, particularly if you're fortunate enough to live in a zip code of the schools that were built in the last decade, because those schools are beautiful and have all the bells and whistles that make it great for us to be able to educate students. But we have three-hundred-and-fifty-seven schools in the Clark County School District. Thirty percent of those schools were built before nineteen eighty-eight. Their thirty years are older, and twenty-eight of those schools are fifty years are older. And when you take a look at the plans of those schools, particularly those twenty-eight schools, or the schools that are thirty or more years, they were built before anyone could even conceive of the computer age that we would be in now. Certainly, there was no way that anyone could have predicted at that time that, beginning next year, assessments online would be required by the Nevada State Legislature of our third through eighth graders, that they would be required to take tests online. So if you're a student that is in a classroom that has one electrical outlet, that reality of taking the mandated online assessment is going to be very difficult. The first week of school, the Clark County School District experienced forty-seven complete AC outages across the district. So forty-seven of our schools had air conditioning outages the last week in August that were serious enough that they were gone for at least two hours, some of them so serious that they lasted the entire day. Five of those schools, we had to close down completely. For some of the schools, we sent children home early, losing instruction time. Some of them, we sent them to a nearby school where they sat in the cafeteria in the library so that they at least could have some instruction. When our facilities have gone to the point that it now inhibits our ability to instruct students, it is important for us to take a careful look at it. I mentioned to you that the nineteen ninety-eight building program was intended to be a ten-year program. It was always the intent that in nineteen, in two thousand and eight, that the school district would come back and ask for an extension of the existing property tax rate. That was always the plan. In two thousand and eight, the economy was in a very bad way, and the decision was made that it was not the right time to ask for additional dollars. In addition, to be fair, during our good times, that three-point-five billion-dollar generation of funds that we had predicted actually came to four-point-nine billion dollars. That's why we were able to build so many more schools than were promised. We were able to over-deliver on every promise that we made to the public. And so there was still some money left in two thousand and eight, and the decision was made, let's wait. We looked again in two thousand and ten with the idea that we would go back then. Again, we felt that it was important for us to wait a little bit longer. So here we are in two thousand and twelve. The money from the nineteen ninety-eight bond is now down to the last several million dollars. There's not enough money to complete the projects that need to be done, and yet our ongoing needs still need to be taken care of. I need to make sure that you understand the difference of the two operating, two budgets that we basically work within the school district. One of them is for capital construction and the renovation of existing schools. Those funds always come to us through a local vote, through county voters. So it's a county issue, countywide. Every county in the state is responsible for their own school construction and renovation. Those dollars come to us through approval from our own voters. We have, as I mentioned before, we've been very successful that since the nineteen eighties, the voters have approved a series of issues so that we were able to take care of those issues. The other form of funding that we receive is the funding that we get through the Nevada Plan, which is the operating expense. And so generally speaking, operating expenses takes care of the salaries and the supplies and those things that we need to run school. The capital construction dollars take care of the facilities themselves, major equipment purchases. The Clark County School District, over the last four years, has, like every other agency, has faced extreme budget cuts, and so we have had six-hundred-million dollars out of our budget cut over the past four years. And those cuts, as we've tried to keep them away from the students, have then begun to impact some of the other supporting operations, specifically facilities maintenance. Some of the things that we face, like all of those air conditioning outages the first week of school, were because our facilities division has been cut so much, we now have six AC technicians who take care of all six-thousand air conditioning units in the school district, not able to keep up with all the things that we need to do. But exacerbating that problem is the fact that we have so many of our air conditioning units that are so old that they require so much more care and attention, that the normal, where, the normal maintenance that should be done across the board has been inhibited. As a result, the Clark County School District, the trustees made the decision, as you know, we came before you so that we could go through the process, that the time had come, that we do need to put this question on the ballot. And in addition, asking for an extension of the existing property tax is not an option at this time. Because of the decrease in assessed valuation, the amount of money generated is enough for us to pay our ongoing debt, the amount of money that we've incurred as we build all of those two-hundred-and-twenty-two schools over the last twenty-five years, but it does not, those debts do not begin to retire until two thousand and eighteen. And so between now and two thousand and eighteen, we have ongoing needs, but not enough revenue stream to cover them. So for that purpose, the school district has asked for a temporary tax increase of twenty-one cents per one-hundred dollars of assessed valuation that will last for six years only. This is different, excuse me, this is different from the typical bond campaign that often school districts run, in fact, that we've been using since the nineteen eighties. This is a pay-as-you-go campaign, which is a very responsible way for us to use taxpayers' dollars. The difference between a bond campaign and a pay-as-you-go campaign is that with the pay-as-you-go plan, no money is borrowed. Therefore, no money will be spent on interest. There is not a long-term obligation that would be required by the voters to continue an existing rate until the debt is retired. Instead, it's done just like a frugal family might manage their own budget. Let's decide that we, let's assume that we decided that we were going to remodel our kitchen, and we didn't want to take out a bank loan. And so instead, we would put in away enough money until we could afford to buy the new dishwasher, and then enough money until we could afford the new refrigerator, whatever else that we want to do, but we would pay for it as we go. We would pay cash. In essence, that's what the district will be doing with pay-as-you-go funding. As the money is collected, it will be used for the projects that have been identified. The way the projects were identified is based on their Facility Condition Index, which is an industry standard that evaluates the condition of every school, taking a look at the exact condition, what the building itself looks like, taking a look at the life systems, the major systems of those schools, for example, the plumbing, the electrical, the roofing system, what the parking lot is like, all those major systems that are part of the school, and predicting when the useful life of those air conditioners and plumbing and all those things will end, and also taking a look at the educational requirements, such as online assessment that will be required, that have been put in place since the last time the building was either constructed or renovated. By using that, those three indicators, a formula is used, and then every school has an FCI number that is applied to it. And so by looking at the FCI numbers is the way that we were able to make a decision about which schools we would put at the top of the list. Now, pay-as-you-go has some advantages, and the fact that all of the money goes to the projects, and so we get more projects with the same amount of money than we would if we were spending quite a bit of the money on interest. It also means that we will be able to guarantee that we're going to retire this temporary tax increase at the end of two thousand and eighteen. The difficulty with it is that you can't front-load the program like we've done in the past, but we think that is okay with this program. We think that we will just be able to continue to assess every year what needs to be done next and use the money in that way. As we were going through the eighties and the nineties, the growth was so explosive. We had two-hundred-thousand new students during that period of time. There is no way we could have used a pay-as-you-go program then, but we do have that ability to do that now. I gave you a list of the projects that are included in the program, and just for your enjoyment, excuse me, I highlighted the yellow ones are projects that are, that fall within the jurisdiction of your boundaries, the city boundaries, so that you can see what they are. In addition to the projects that are identified, we also are going to replace two elementary schools. As you know, there comes a point in time that sometimes it's just more effective to tear down a structure and start over than to continue to try to repair it, especially when you're talking about energy costs and the way that we can do things so much better and have operating expenses be so much more efficient as we go on. The two schools that are going to be replaced are Lincoln Elementary School, which is in North Las Vegas, and Rex Bell Elementary School, which is in Las Vegas. We're really pleased that those schools, both of them are in dire need. I will tell you, there are nine schools on the school replacement list, nine that need to be replaced. We're only going to be able to do two because of the temporary nature of this tax increase. Additionally, we have set aside eight percent of the dollars that we expect that we'll collect to be used for two new schools. I will tell you that no one was more surprised than the Clark County School District that on the first day of school, we had more students than we anticipated. In fact, by count day, we had three thousand more students this year than we did last year. We are now at our peak enrollment. We have never had as many students in the Clark County School District as we have had this year. Five of our elementary schools on the first day of school opened with more than one thousand students. These are schools that are designed for seven to seven-hundred-and-fifty kids, but one thousand kids showed up. The surrounding schools are also way over capacity, and so it's not like we could just bump some of those kids to the school next door. The eight percent that's set aside for two new schools will be used to help offset that overcrowding. When the time has come that we've collected enough money and build those two new schools, we will be able to identify where specifically they will be placed. They have not been cited yet. One of the other things that the trustees put in place, just to also make one more guarantee to the taxpayers, that they were going to be careful about this, is that there is a one-hundred-and-twenty-million-dollar limit per year that will be collected. And so if good news happens and our assessed valuation starts creeping back up where we hope that it will be, there still will be a limit that we will not collect more than one-hundred-and-twenty-million dollars per year over the six-year period of time. So the ultimate amount we could collect would be seven-hundred-and-twenty-million dollars. We have designed a program to spend six-hundred-and-sixty-nine million. That is the amount that we anticipate will be collected using today's projections. If we are fortunate enough to collect seven-hundred-and-twenty million, there is no shortage to the list of things that need to be done that would be bumped up then, again, using the FCI. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Councilman Barlow?
Yes, it's Ms. Haldeman?
Yes.
Okay. On your spreadsheet, at the top of the spreadsheet, you have PZ. I just want to...
It's code.
Okay.
It's performance zone. As you know, the school district has broken up into thirteen performance zones. They're geographic areas, and so for our use, that's just the performance zone that the school is in.
Okay. So the numbers just represent the zone in which the school is located?
That's correct.
Okay. And secondly, the star ranking, what does that represent?
One of the reforms that the superintendent has brought with him as he is working with the Clark County School District is that every school now has a ranking that is based on their academic achievement. And so it's a ranking of one through five, and so five is the best that you can get. A one-star school is, one and two-star schools are schools that we're really working with additionally to make sure that they have the things that they need.
Okay. And thank you for that clarification. I have some concerns, major concerns, specifically as it relates to a number of schools in my district, but two in particular. One is Kit Carson, and the other is Matt Kelly. I'll start with Matt Kelly. I had the pleasure of going over and speaking to a number of students in the spring of this year, and I was appalled to walk onto the campus, and the AC unit of that school was completely out throughout the entire school, and our babies were sitting in the classroom sweating. And the teachers, and my hat goes off to the teachers because they continue to provide a level of instruction, but you can tell that those kids were not concentrating because they were so hot. And this particular day, it had to be approximately a hundred and five, a hundred and six outside, and each one of those doors at Matt Kelly were open. And so you can just imagine the heat that's outside, and then the heat that's inside the classroom, were literally harming our kids' ability to focus. Matt Kelly was built in nineteen sixty, and this is a conversation that many people have brought before the Clark County Board of Trustees, the Clark County School District Board of Trustees. And for the life of me, I don't know how Matt Kelly can continue to be overlooked as a replacement school when, in fact, that school is in such disrepair that there's so much work that needs to be done, that school actually needs to be scraped down. It really does. And then in addition to that, being on campus and teachers sharing with me that they have mice running around the classroom inside of this school, it made me mad. And that is not fair to the children. It is not fair to the parents, who for many years, since nineteen sixty, have basically paid into the tax base of the school district, and for the school district, in my opinion, not to have looked at this school to basically come in and provide the much-needed repair and replacement. And year after year after year after year, the school district has basically placed Band-Aids on Matt Kelly, and I'm tired of it. So I really want the school district to do something as it relates to making sure that the quality of care provided to every other school in the city, in the county, and throughout Clark County, the same respect and due diligence is brought to the schools that have been around for close to fifty years with nothing but Band-Aids, year after year after year after year. And I'm frustrated with it. And now for the school district to come and basically ask for more money, I understand that you need more money, but at the same time, we can't overlook those schools that have been around much longer than other schools that are receiving complete overhauls that are younger than the schools that are in complete disrepair. I go over to Kit Carson. Kit Carson, same thing, air conditioning out. What is going on to the point to where the kids have to suffer in the heat? This is Las Vegas, and the kids are suffering, trying to concentrate, trying to learn, but they can't because they don't have a cool environment in order to receive the much-needed instruction that the school district has to offer through their wonderful teaching staff. Now, that's a frustration on my part. I can only imagine how the teachers feel, how their administrators feel, how those principals feel, how those parents feel, how members of the community feel as it relates to, you know, this is uncalled-for. So we have to do something. If, in fact, these schools are not going to be replaced, then at least if you're going to put a Band-Aid, put a brand-new air conditioner unit on top of the building, if the entire building is not going to be overhauled. We can't just continue to put a small Band-Aid on a huge sore. And so that's where my frustration comes, and I know that my frustration isn't pointing at you, Ms. Haldeman, but you're the one standing before the microphone, so you have to be the one to deliver the message back to the powers that be. And I'm pretty sure this isn't something new that you've heard, because I've seen countless members of the community basically come down to your board meetings and basically express those same concerns. And this is a conversation that has been going on since the nineties, the nineties. And here it is, we're in two thousand and twelve, and we're still talking about the same two schools that continue to receive Band-Aids, and I'm tired of it. We have to do better for our communities. We can't forget about the older areas. Yes, the city has grown magnificently around the valley, but we can't continue as residents to pay taxes for other areas to grow, and we forget about the inner city of which, where it all started. There's decay occurring in areas that I believe that the school district is not addressing, and it's not fair to those kids. Those kids should not be the ones stuck in the middle, because it's our kids that are losing. And then we look up and look at stats that our school district is at the bottom of the barrel when it comes to academics. Some may say, "Well, hell, look, there's a reason why." There's no, I'm not surprised that the star ranking of the school that's listed, for example, Matt Kelly, is a two. The highest you can get is a five. Does that not rank in the sense of the school district needing to look at that and basically say, "Well, maybe it's because of the quality of the classroom that the kids can't learn because they're so hot?" I'm hot right now, and I can barely concentrate on this, on the topic of this issue. So I can only imagine the environment... So I can only imagine the environment in which the kids are there to learn. So, I mean, I, I'll be honest, I agree with the 21% pay-as-you-go. I do, because it makes sense, and you were very crafty, you and your entire staff were very crafty in basically designing something that we need to assist. I don't want the school district to basically be in the position that it's in from an environment standpoint and from an economic standpoint. I'm a product of the Clark County School District. My brothers and my sister, all born and raised, right here. So I have an investment and an interest to see the quality of care in our school district improve. That's why I chose to remain in Las Vegas, to basically improve the quality of life of the residents. But I believe we all have to do our part, and I can't stand by being a product of the Clark County School District and see how disrespectful, in my opinion, the school district has been to the older schools, specifically in the urban core. And that's something that I'm going to continue to hammer away at until something changes on behalf of the students of which I represent in my district. So thank you for allowing me to stand on my soapbox and basically get that off my chest, and I don't mean to say anything disrespectful in the sense of what I've just shared, Ms. Haldeman, but it's a very great concern that we have to work together as a city and as a school district to improve the quality and the environment in which our kids are, have to learn. And I don't want to go by another school, whether it be in my district or anywhere in Clark County or the city of Las Vegas as a whole, and see doors open in the heat of the day and our kids sweaty with no water to at least drink to keep them cool. So those are my concerns, and I'm just passionate about our kids, Ms. Haldeman, and I look forward to supporting this initiative, but I really hope that my comments resonate to the point that there are changes to take place specifically at Matt Kelly and Kit Carson moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Ross?
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilman Barlow, thank you for your passion. I think Mrs. Haldeman got it, and I think that's why she's here today, so that she can address some of those issues. My comments to you, Mrs. Haldeman, are this: Let's just get this done. Let's get these schools to where they need to be. Let's get these kids off the floors in these classrooms and into seats where they belong. That's where my passion and concern comes from. Let's be clear, too, that I am challenged by some in the Nevada Legislature who had no problem supporting massive cuts to K-12 education. That is the lifeblood of this community in regards to our children's education. It is difficult for us to want businesses to come into Las Vegas and relocate their corporations here. We can't have a trained workforce. And that just, it bugs me to no end, and I'm not venting, I'm just venting, actually. Couple of things. This is jobs to me, and I can fully support that. I don't see my alma mater, Twin Lakes, on here, though. I'm just giving it our time. But I certainly see the need for this, and I can totally support this and what you guys are trying to do because it is jobs. My concerning comment to you is this: Is there a way that as you do all this rehab on these schools or tearing old ones down and building new ones, that you use local companies? I don't want Nevada taxpayer dollars going to Utah or Arizona or California. And I don't know if you can key that in there, but goodness sakes, that bothers me to no end, and I think it bothers all of us, when our Nevada hard-paying tax dollars leave the state to not-local companies that are bringing in their workforce from out of state and taking those dollars out of Las Vegas and out of Southern Nevada. That challenges me. So can I get some kind of head nod, a commitment from you that says, you know what, Councilman? We're going to use local companies on all this stuff. Can you do that without breaking the law?
May I respond?
Mayor?
Mayor Goodman, thank you. Councilman Ross, it's our intent also to have these jobs be local. Of course, we do have to follow all state laws, but we do take a look at local businesses and hope that they win the bid. Of course, we go through the bid process, but there is a point advantage for people who are local that helps factor into that.
Thank you. Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, I've been up in the legislature for a long time, and I've seen the fights go on over this, and the school district has asked for the money that Councilman Barlow feels that should have been spent here, particularly on the old schools. They have asked for it with the intention of spending the money in those old schools, and they didn't get it. So we've got to be careful where we aim our guns. The unfortunate thing is, is there's competition for dollars not only around the county, but then you get in the district and you've got people who work there competing for the dollars. And so every now and then, the legislature has fenced off money and said, it's not going to go for salaries, it's going to go for this or that. And sometimes they do that, but not always. So when they fence off money, it goes to the spot where you really think it ought to go. And I, obviously, I've already voted for this twice, being on the Debt Management Commission, and so I will vote for it this election day when I get my ballot. I think that pay-go is smart, no interest, you know, no borrowing, no addition, real debt. I mean, it's a smart thing, and you're flexible. If you don't get the money, you don't spend it. Then when you get it, and if it comes in big time, you can spend a lot of it. Construction costs are starting to edge up again, I understand, so the smart thing for the community to do is to go out and start right away. Lowest responsible bidder, sometimes if the local people aren't going to go after the business because they're bidding in Arizona or California or in Utah, like this is the way the free enterprise system works, then, you know, we've got to take the lowest responsible bid. But responsible is the key because I do want to point out one thing, Joyce, and it stands out like a sore thumb to me. When we have contractors that don't do a good job on something, and you hope that they're red-flagged, I think that's a key thing in any governmental project, is to look and see who did a good job over the long term and who didn't. I see six schools where major HVAC replacement is required, and they're all 20 years old. They all were built at the same time, maybe on the 88 bonds, maybe, you know, look at Ernie Becker, The Greenspuns, Walter Johnson, Michael Callahan, Theron Swainston, and Thurman White. Here we've got six schools all built between '91 and '93, maybe by the same contractor, and they're all failed. That's a shame, and it means to me, and I've always liked to do this, go back, because I was on the Capitol Construction Committee at the legislature, go back and see who was a crappy builder and just blacklist them. You know, you find out who owned it, and if they came up with another company, you blacklist them. You know, you tell them, embarrass them in public and say, you built a lousy, lousy job. And that's what school board can do. It ought to do it, not to be afraid of it, because they're costing us a ton of money. They shouldn't have been replaced, and God knows what other systems were built by these same people at that same time that haven't quite failed yet. But something's gone wrong in the design or the equipment that was used by the contractor, and bingo, there you go. That's worthy of an investigation, frankly, that sort of thing, but it should start internally first. So with that said, I feel like I want to urge people out there to support this pay-go. It's the smartest way you can do things. In fact, this is not even addressing all of your needs, not at all. And it's like city government, way underfunded, doesn't have the tax dollars to replace infrastructure that we have. We're way behind, billions and billions of dollars, way behind. Now, wherever you build a road, put a stripe down on a road, you do something, you build a building. The second you build it, it starts to age, and if you don't have the money to replace that project later on down the line, it's going to fail. So thank you for coming and with your report. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Tarkanian.
It's on now. First of all, I was a little surprised to see Becker Middle School there, too, already needing the air conditioning and everything changed because I was there when that was done, as well as Greenspun. And certainly, I agree with him that that should be looked into, and then you do whatever you possibly can to keep anybody out that didn't do as good a job as they should have. Secondly, I know how hard it is to do this because I was there when we went through the other bond issue. You know, we started meeting at 5:30 at night, and there were nights that we went till 1:00, 1:30 in the morning, trying so hard to be fair because we had to put a certain percentage for new schools and a certain percentage for modernization. I think as far as the new schools, the district has done an absolutely superb job. The schools are excellent, and you've met the crisis and you overcame that. The year I was president of the board, we had 16 new schools, two of which were high schools. Now, can you imagine 60 new schools? That's larger than probably the majority of the school districts in the country. I mean, that's a lot of schools, so I think that was handled. The problem has come with the other part, and I know we tried very hard to do it the best way we could, but the modernization. And I wanted to ask you, what does major modernization mean? For example, under Matt Kelly, you have on your list major modernization.
Mayor Goodman, members of the council, thank you, Councilwoman Tarkanian, for asking that question. When a school is listed as a major modernization, it means that there are multiple systems that will be replaced, and then also the aesthetic things that take place, carpeting, paint, and those kinds of things that improve the building. And so if it says major modernization, it means it's not just getting a new roof, it's not just getting an AC, but many of those systems, sometimes more than one and sometimes all of them.
So it might include the roof and the air conditioning and heating and all that sort of stuff?
Electrical, all those things, yes.
But it would depend on what the need was.
Exactly. And I can certainly provide that list for you so that you're aware of what will be done at that school.
And you know yourself, and I, we've talked, that we haven't been exactly totally pleased with some of the delay in modernizing certain schools. But I do know the district has tried, and I wanted to say that sometimes it's hard to understand how all this fits in. For example, I noticed that Rex Bell is not as old as Matt Kelly, but it will be replaced. However, I also know that Rex Bell is a very overcrowded school, and it's, if you're older and you need replacements, if you have more people there, it's falling apart at a faster rate. I also know that Hyde Park, which is older than either Kelly or Carson, is not on the replacement list. By the way, are they anyplace on that nine?
I'm not allowed to divulge.
Oh, okay. But anyway, they're not on that replacement list, but I understand why we are taking Rex Bell before we take Hyde Park, which is in my own district, for two schools, because one of them, the role would stay at least unless something happened this year, relatively steady, and the other, it's starting to burst out. So I haven't been totally happy, and I voiced that, and I voiced that to school representatives and other people, particularly on the replacement issue. The new schools, I thought, I don't know if anybody could have done better than Clark County School District did in keeping up with the crisis we were facing. But the other is a problem, and I think maybe if our councilman has questions about why this fit in sooner than something else, that maybe you could help him learn that. So even though I'm not pleased with some of the things, I know how critical it is, and I agree with him. You can't do it in the heat, and I've had district schools in my ward this year that are having similar problems. It's a big problem in Vegas, the heating and cooling system. So I just want to say, I support what you're trying to do. I hope that you put all the parameters, getting as much as possible local work, because I agree so strongly with Councilman Ross on that, and making sure that we hit the schools that are in most need. And I thank you all in the district for working as hard as you do.
Thank you. I have a couple of just comments, and thank you for coming and making the presentation. I would give a plea for inner-city schools. I know the formula, if we fix our inner-city schools and make them the best they can be and put the best teachers with the best equipment in our inner-city schools, there will no longer be academic and professional blight in there. That would be number one. I know some are included in this proposal. I would also suggest that somehow out of this bond issue, a repair and replacement, be figure and maintenance, be, put aside, have an aside fund so that we're not always having to come back to ask for more funding. I think wise financing always should have a repair and replacement fund as we go along and either build new, and maybe that's already there. The other comment I would make, and maybe it's already been looked into, but today is the day of Wi-Fi. And as we go ahead and have that movement rather than to, I mean, I know we have to get from today to that point, but for the district to really look into that in areas so that picks up comprehensively all the schools in the areas. And certainly, from the perspective of us in the city, I think that would really be something that we would certainly want to see happen in our city schools. And I don't know, and I do want to announce to the public, Councilman Ross had to leave. He is the president of the Nevada League of Cities. They will be meeting tomorrow and through the weekend up in Elko. That's a good 10-hour drive, so he apologizes for leaving in the midst of your presentation, too, and for the public to know why he is no longer sitting here. Councilman Beers?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for your presentation, Ms. Haldeman. I will be personally voting yes on question number two. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So this is just a, it's not going to be public hearing, although I'd love to hear from you always, you know that. And if there are no other questions, it is a report, and we thank you for taking the time and for the efforts of this entire school district and the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Okay, we will now move on to item number 42. This is a report from the Downtown Las Vegas Alliance regarding a community survey report and rediscover downtown. And so if you will all come forward, this is in reference to all wards and in specific to the downtown area, and if you will, please state your names and come forward.
My name is Romeo Betty, Urban Economic Development Department. Today to present their community survey is Terry Murphy for the Alliance, she's a vice chairman. Sam Cherry is also on the executive committee, and with your permission, I'll just do the report.
Wonderful, and I see you've lost your friend. Okay.
Hello, Sam Cherry with the Las Vegas Downtown Alliance. We're here to talk about the alliance. We're a group of business owners that ranges from the largest of downtown's hotel and casinos to all the way down to small mom-and-pop businesses. We have initiatives that range from helping businesses relocate to downtown, getting them plugged into the downtown community, holding special events, and one of them being the Rediscover Downtown Day, which we'll talk about. One important thing that we've brought forward is a survey, a community survey that we've commissioned, which has been an invaluable piece of information as a business owner because we can really measure what we've done in the past and where downtown is going. And with that, I'll turn it over to Terry to talk about that.
Thank you, Sam. With the Downtown Las Vegas Alliance...
Your name, please, and your association.
My name is Terry Murphy. I am vice chair of the Downtown Las Vegas Alliance, and my address is 516 South Sixth Street, Downtown Las Vegas. We engaged in promotional, some promotional activities which will result in Rediscover Downtown Day on October 13th, which Sam will talk about in a moment. But before we decided on how to proceed with a public relations program about downtown, we wanted to see what people thought about it in the first place. And we've never really done a comprehensive survey about people's attitudes towards downtown. What I'm presenting to you today is a very, very small part of the survey that we've done. Your staff has the complete survey. It was funded in part by the City of Las Vegas, the Regional Transportation Commission, and the Las Vegas Convention and Visitors Authority, along with contributions from the Downtown Las Vegas Alliance. So this has been a true public-private partnership to complete this, and it has helped us inform some of our public relations activities. So Downtown Las Vegas Awareness and Perceptions. We wanted to see how aware people are about downtown and what do they think about it when they hear about it. So we asked people, have they heard or read anything about downtown Las Vegas within the past 12 months? And 70% had said yes to that question. Now, this was conducted at the end of April, so people had heard about the Mob Museum, they'd heard about the Smith Center, and so on and so forth. So there had been a lot of PR and a lot of information leading up to the survey. So this is not a surprising figure here. But, the good news, would you say you generally had a positive or negative reaction to what you heard or read? And 79% of our respondents, which there are 400 respondents, had a positive, actually, this was 281. We only asked this question of those who had seen or read something about downtown. 79% had a positive reaction to what they had seen or read about downtown, and in today's climate, that's extremely good. To the best of your recollection, what topic have you seen or read the most about? Number one, more likely than not because of the timing, was... Number one, more likely than not because of the timing, was the Smith Center for the Performing Arts. New businesses, obviously, you all see those every day coming before you, and we're happy to welcome so many new businesses downtown. Zappos and the Downtown Project came in third, and obviously, that's in the news quite a bit, and they're doing so many good things. And after that, special events and entertainment, which we're going to talk a little bit about some of the special events that are coming on Rediscover Downtown Day. Then hotel/casino renovations, crime and public safety. Obviously, we know from Metro that crime is significantly down in downtown Las Vegas, the Mob Museum, and so on down the line. So that's just a sampling of what people think of off the top of their head when they think about what they heard or read about downtown. Now, here's something that, in my view, as someone who does surveys on a regular basis, is very interesting. When we ask them what source of information they heard about downtown from, obviously, the top is local newspaper and then television, but the third one is word of mouth. And what that tells me is that people are talking about downtown. They're coming down here, they're seeing or hearing something, and they're telling their friends. And that's an incredibly positive number, because 14% of people who have heard about downtown heard about it from a friend and through word of mouth. So that's just good. Based upon what you know or may have heard, would your overall impression of downtown be positive or negative? 74% have a positive impression of downtown Las Vegas. That is a very high number. No matter what you ask, I'm sure all of you would love to see those kind of poll numbers when you run in for reelection. 74% is pretty high. Based on what you know or have heard, do you believe things in downtown are moving in the right direction or wrong direction? Now, this is an astounding number. I don't think you could ask this question of any other thing, any other measure. 81% of the people we sampled think downtown is moving in the right direction, which is really quite amazing. All things considered, how likely or unlikely are you to recommend visiting downtown to friends and family or guests from out of town? 84% will recommend that their friends or relatives from out of town come downtown. That means a lot for visitation in the downtown area. To the best of your recollection, we want to know, how often are people coming downtown? How often have you visited downtown Las Vegas during the last 12 months? 47% have visited five times or more. Obviously, we want to see that number go up, but I would bet, if you asked the same question five years ago, it would have been a whole lot different. So the things that everybody has done in this community, from the small businesses to the large businesses, to all of you, have contributed to that number. When you go downtown, what do you do most often when you go downtown? And what we see here, 28% are coming to go sightseeing and walk around. What that tells me is, from our previous number, 14% are hearing about it by word of mouth. You tell your friends, you better go downtown, check it out. So people are coming down first to check it out, but as the previous slide noted, they're coming down five times, in a certain period of time. Secondly, they're coming to dine in a restaurant, see a music act, gamble in a casino, attend a special event. There's a wide variety of reasons people are coming downtown, yes.
Question. Have you shared or will you be sharing specifically with the museums and the art galleries this information? And can you attribute that to the fact that there's not much advertising done, or anything else?
I did share this information. Because we did this as the Downtown Las Vegas Alliance, we reached out to both Fremont East and the Arts District, and I provided this presentation to a small group of the Board of the Arts District, as well as the full Board of the Fremont East. We're using this information. It's partially publicly funded, it's available to anyone who wants it, and obviously, I'm available to explain it to whoever wants to hear it. We distribute it widely.
Okay, I just would ask, because we do have this burgeoning, wonderful museum group, and would love them to see, in particular, this particular slide or page. So it tells them something that they need to be doing, which they're not.
And if there's anyone in particular you'd like me to visit?
All the museums, all of them. Thank you.
We will be happy to do so.
Thank you. Mayor. Councilman Barlow had a question or a comment, sorry.
Yes, sir.
Terry, a great presentation. In the questions that you asked, was, did you extract any of those polls that could have possibly been individuals that work in the downtown?
No, we did not. But I will tell you, at the very last slide, we'll show you exactly who it is we spoke to.
Okay.
Okay.
And that will show that they were, those are not employees?
No, 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 no. It's widely distributed. The very last slide will tell you exactly who we spoke to, and it's good information. In addition to this slide in front of you, I want to give you another bit of information. When we ask people what comes to mind automatically when they think about downtown, 61% combined said either Fremont Street Experience or Fremont East. Fremont East, its own little enclave there, is getting quite the reputation in and of itself, so they're doing quite a good job. Next slide, when you visit downtown, now this one, this one will blow you away. Take a careful look at this slide. When you visit downtown for leisure or entertainment purposes, would you say your experiences are usually positive or negative? 94% of those who visited downtown Las Vegas had a positive experience. I think there are organizations who work very hard at customer service who would be thrilled to achieve a number like that. That number just blows me away. I hope it does you, too. How likely or unlikely are you to visit downtown in the next six months? 73% of those we spoke to said they are likely to visit downtown in the next six months. And now, Councilman Barlow, your question. We surveyed, it was a random digit dial telephone survey of 400 residents of urban Clark County. 47% of those came from unincorporated Clark County, which is, this is the basic, the general population distribution of urban Clark County. 31% came from the City of Las Vegas, 12% from Henderson, and 9.5% from North Las Vegas. So this was a very scientific survey. We phoned home landlines as well as cell phones, it's a combination of both, and it was a good random sample of Southern Nevada residents. So I think everyone who's contributed to downtown, people like my colleague here, Sam, all of you have a lot to be proud of for what's gone on. And I'd like to ask Sam Cherry now to talk a little bit about a very special day that's coming up, which is Rediscover Downtown Day. We found some other parts of the survey said that people are interested in rediscovering downtown. And so, Sam?
Before, Sam, before you speak, I have a comment, Mayor, as it relates to the slide here, Terry. My specific question is, of the 400 and some odd recipients of the poll, a question being posed, do you work in the downtown? Because my concern is, if in fact, a number of those polled who could ultimately live in the unincorporated Clark County, Henderson, City of Las Vegas, or City of North Las Vegas, could, you know, possibly skew some of these slides as it relates to how often you visit downtown? Because although I work in downtown and I were to take this poll, if the poll were to ask me, how often do I visit downtown, I would, and one of the slides that you put up were five times or more, I would fall into that category as an employee in the downtown community. And so I just wanted to basically ask if in fact, there was anything within the questions as it relates to those individuals taking the poll, how many of them actually worked in the downtown? So that you can basically have a more of a null appropriate spread as far as the slide is concerned.
I can answer that in a general way, Councilman. Specifically, I don't know if that specific question was answered. However, and it's because this was done several months ago, normally, typically, as a research firm, we will have certain screening questions to screen out people who would be predisposed to answer one way or another. So for example, we would screen out people who work for a TV station or a news media. We would screen out people who work for a particular organization. I would imagine that we did that. I cannot say for certain that that particular question was answered, but it's something that we typically do. We typically screen out, before we start a questionnaire like this, people who would be predisposed to answer one way or another. Sam?
Oh, thank you, I'm sorry. We're not done. May I just comment just a little bit here? I was just thinking that what they hear about the town is good, and it has a lot to do with how they feel about downtown. You know, there's been a major turnaround in media coverage of the city and particularly downtown. It's just the last few years, there were always these tensions between newspaper and the mayor, you know, the competitive stuff, which was cool, because it's, we're all subject to that. But I feel like for the last few years, we've seen real positive coverage of, and I'm not a Pollyanna, I mean, I don't just say, you know, just report the good stuff and ignore the bad stuff. They've reported it all, and by and large, it's been much better. And they haven't been shy about saying nice things. For a long time, that wasn't the case. And it's hard for a news media to say nice things about people. Kind words clubs they do not belong to. But they manage to have been giving us a better-than-even break, I think.
Well, I think we've seen, even during the worst recession in at least Southern Nevada's history, we've seen an incredible amount of entrepreneurialism and risk-taking in the downtown area by new businesses. And I think that that's something that has been reported on widely and in a positive vein, because people are coming down and enjoying it, and things are turning out fairly well. And Sam can tell you a lot more about those positive things that are going on. And then we'll both be available to answer any questions.
Yeah, so growing up here, we always, I've always heard that there's no culture in Las Vegas. And to me, those days are in the past. And people can find out, on October 13th, that Saturday, we're launching Rediscover Downtown Day. And it kicks off with a downtown heart walk and run. There's participating museums that are offering two-for-one tickets to locals, so they can find out more about the museums, which we talked about in the slides. At noon, there's a walking tour, so people can see how livable downtown is, what's happening in the Arts District and different galleries that are there. There's 35 different businesses that are offering specials, opportunities for people to bring their families down as well. The Nevada Ballet Theater is performing jewels at the Smith Center. The D is having its grand opening on Fremont Street, the D Hotel and Casino. Vegas Streets will be happening, which is always an exciting event. And then Fremont Street Experience always has opportunities for locals to come down and enjoy.
One of the other things that's going to be happening, we just learned, is that Rick and Kelly Dale of American Restoration are going to be giving out hot dogs all day. You can go tour their yard, and you can meet them between 11:00 and 1:00.
Yep. And then we encourage everyone to join us. There's ways that they can sign up through the Downtown Alliance website. They can attend our mixers, they can take a leap of faith and even join the Alliance. We have a Facebook, we have Twitter. If you go to the next slide, I think it has the different ways to connect with us.
Yep. You can, we have a Facebook page, Rediscover Downtown Las Vegas, and we also have a website that is not the website that's on there, but rediscovertdowntownlv.com will tell you everything that's happening on October 13th, Rediscover Downtown Day. From early in the morning with the heart walk till late at night with Vegas Streets, there's something for everybody happening downtown. It's an incredible amount of events, and we invite everybody to come and be a part of it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hooray for Las Vegas. Any other comments, questions from council? Thank you very much, Ms. Murphy, and thank you, Mr. Cherry, as always. Thank you. It's really exciting. We look forward to participating. We'll move on now to item number 43, Report of the Status of the Municipal Court Department Services and Strategic Goals. And welcome back. Good morning.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Matthew Fisk. I'm the court administrator with the Las Vegas Municipal Court, and I have 10 minutes to share quite a bit of information. So it all started back when I was a little boy. I'm going to get this done in 10 minutes. I was a volunteer at my father's office. He worked for the State of Nevada Parole and Probation Department. And I was an official volunteer. He always had a sign in his office that I chuckle at on a daily basis with my staff, a lot of staff members here today. It said, "We have learned to do so much with so little for so long, and so now, we are prepared to do everything forever with nothing." And I didn't understand it as an eight-year-old, but as the years have passed, growing up in a large family and working in the court system, I understand it better. I'd like to thank the mayor and council, the city manager, Mr. Gerbic also, along with all of my colleagues, and Chief Coyne for your guidance and support for the court. You've made the court the great institution that it is. We recently celebrated 101 years of service. It's a court of record with real-time case processing. When people ask me how I like it here, because I've been here for 10 months, I say it's great. I love the staff, I get along with the judges and the staff, high energy, high morale, and we laugh a lot. And that's important in our line of business. We count on six judges and one traffic commissioner. We have two part-time commissioners that make up one position. Let me just tell you that if you look out across the state, you'll see courts that have four judges and process on the municipal court level around 40,000 cases. This court handles 200,000 cases with six judges and one traffic commissioner. They've done this through the ideas of staff and leveraging of technology. We have about 200 employees and independent contractors. So that's some 200,000 new cases per year, plus a lot of cases that come back, because we need to readdress issues. They may come back in custody or out of custody. So our judges are scheduled to see some 200 cases per day, and our front counters may see 840 individuals, 850 individuals on a daily basis, and our phones don't stop ringing. We have about 1,500 incoming calls each day to our court. To put it into perspective, the court handles about 50% of all municipal court cases statewide. We have a $20 million budget, and the cost recovery is 154%. I'd like to just point out and give credit to the city and the staff. I'm excited to work here, and I'm proud to work for the Las Vegas Municipal Court. Most courts are lucky if they can recover half of their own cost. So at 154%, we're doing very well. There is room for improvement. We have six specialty court programs, and actually, six specialty courts and two focus programs. We are focused on, in the interest of time I'm going to move forward, we feel that it's really important to address those cases that come through our doors once, maybe twice, and give individuals individual justice in their cases. Have I lost contact? Actually, our first issue is technology. So that's actually a good segue into this. We have several work groups that have to work together to fulfill eight missions, which I won't go into. And the way that the staff has been able to handle so many cases at such volume is by utilizing technology, work hand-in-hand with city IT staff and some important vendors. Las Vegas Municipal Court's always been on the cutting edge, but to take these specialty court programs and focus programs and all of the work groups, alternative sentencing education, post-sentencing compliance, community service work program, the courtroom, customer service and records staff, management analysts and information technology staff, financial and accounting and administration staff, warrant and fugitive apprehension service, courthouse and judicial security, proactive collections and pre-trial services. To get all that done, it takes a lot of coordination. I'm going to go ahead and move forward a couple of slides. This is a photograph of the courthouse on a typical, on a typical Monday morning, but this shot was actually taken the day after we had that heavy rainstorm. And we really, really rely on technology. I'd like to qualify the slide. It talks about delays in implementing technology to address this ever-increasing workload. Our work is more complex and more voluminous every day. When we can't keep up, as they say, justice delayed is justice denied. So we run into wait time, processing time. So we run into wait time, processing time, error, and customer dissatisfaction issues. That weighs heavily on the staff. As I qualify that slide, I'll say that we work really well with our IT staff and vendors, and we're all in the same boat. We're all competing for the same resources, this ultimate moving target of technology. We are holding out right now for some, the implementation of some very interesting tools. The court's really the leader in the state of some of these ideas, and that's how we're able to hold off, hopefully able to hold off from asking for more staff, because we feel that these tools will help us to address those needs. The other, another big challenge is the decline in available resources to address domestic violence, homelessness, mental health, and substance dependence. The collision of these two factors, declining resources and those chronic issues, calls for specialized services. And so the Las Vegas Municipal Court is unique in that it has these six specialty courts and unique programs. In the interest of time, I'm going to just name those programs, and I'll let you quickly read the slides. Win Court, focused on chronic prostitutes. Hope Court, for our individuals that suffer from mental health illness and substance dependence. Oftentimes, they're homeless, they may be arrested many, many times in the month. Yield Court, youthful offenders and their families who suffer from a number of different issues. These are all different approaches for different target populations. DUI Court, accountability-based program, encouraging personal responsibility. It's a very structured program. And of course, we have a mental health session. What this looks like on a daily basis, we may see eight people, we may see 30 people. What we're doing there is triaging them for competency and potential services and dealing with them as the best we can with the resources that we have. And of course, the Veterans Assistance Referral Program, working hand-in-hand with community services and the VA to get them the help they need and all the aspects of their life. This will bring it home. I actually know a lot of these individuals. I know the young man in the middle. You can see in the second picture, he holds his head high. He's doing very well. I know the gentleman on the bottom right-hand corner. He's a true gentleman, and he's made a lot of progress. I've also met the ladies on the bottom-left corner from Win Court. I think a picture tells a thousand words, and you can see the change, you can see the light in their face. That's what our focus has been. Domestic violence, I'd like to just point out one, domestic violence is a serious grave issue in Las Vegas. Socioeconomic, mental health, and substance dependence issues all feed into it, they impact it. I can tell you that going back three years, we looked at about 6,400 people, and out of that group, going back three years, we started counting about nine months ago, one out of 10 are coming back. The other nine are not reoffending within Las Vegas city limits. We would count that as a success, and we're working hard on it. Our third challenge is, of course, traffic safety. If we don't, if we don't hold traffic offenders, especially traffic violators, especially repeat violators accountable, it only contributes to more crashes and fatalities. We do this through a standardized fine and fee schedule, enhanced penalties, something that's uncommon among courts. Courts usually don't have the resources to look at a person's history and impose enhanced fines. We do that. Proactive collections and education through Traffic Safety School. I would point out, and I don't want to take away Mr. Cervantes Thunder from his presentation, but if we were to show a county graph next to this graph, we would see that both the accidents and fatalities have grown in Clark County. Through a number of measures, our city staff have been able to hold the accidents flat. Fatalities have grown, and that's a different study, but they have made some really progressive moves by looking at specific types of accidents and focusing on them. And our part, of course, is to hold them accountable. To finalize the presentation, just like to say that our basis is to build on the diverse strengths of our own staff and the community, and then we synchronize the needs, what we think the greatest needs of the community are, with the resources that we have to offer. Most of these ideas are coming from our staff that work closely with the people that we serve, and we promote accountability, holding them responsible, rehabilitation, giving people who are willing another chance, and habilitation. There are a lot of people that we serve that never had the ability to cope with these situations in life in the first place. I'll go ahead and close with this final statement, that the court is adopting national performance standards, proud to do so, focus on five areas that ensure that we are providing the most cost-efficient and performance-effective justice for the citizens. So we'll be able to compare our court to other courts across the country, find sister agencies, and see where we can make improvements and possibly help them. Thank you for your time today.
That was a wonderful presentation, and certainly the heart and soul of your staff and yourself. We welcome you to the community, and what a great time you seem to be having and doing such wonderful things. And I hear on my right, Mayor Protem has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of years ago, we started this warrant service unit with the courts and with D and E, and I mean, that's part of holding people accountable. There's people that don't show up for court, they kind of wave their finger at the court system so they get a warrant, and we started this program to go out and get these folks and make sure they're brought to justice. We haven't talked about that in a while. Can you tell me how that warrant service program is going?
I'm glad you asked, sir. It continues to be a success. The goal was, I believe, 1.2 million last year as far as recovering fees. There are other goals related to apprehending fugitives. We actually doubled the goal, working hand-in-hand with D and E. And since then, we've increased efficiencies by creating a warrant window, and we beefed up our collection services. We're also working on some software to automate a lot of our collections processes and only send out marshals on traffic warrants when it's absolutely necessary to do so.
So do we still have marshals that are out in the field full-time, tracking down people with warrants? We're still doing that, correct?
Yes, both D and E and the municipal court, and we meet on a frequent basis to talk about staffing and what our plans are.
Okay, very good. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any counsel?
Yes.
Counsel woman?
I just wanted to ask, I also thought it was an excellent presentation. Did we get a copy of that handout?
I will make sure you have a copy of it.
I'd like to have it, and I'm sure the others would too. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I think we all would, really, the data, and maybe even a page added about the report of what the warrants program has effectuated. That would be great. Thank you, Mr. Fisk.
We could do that, and we extend an invitation to come to court, whether it be a specialty court or just a normal day in court. You can come any day.
Thank you. It is fascinating. Thank you.
Thank you.
And please extend our thanks to your staff as well. Great job, great job. Okay, we will move on to item number 44, discussion for possible action to acquire APN 126-01-502-003 located near the vicinity of US Highway 95 and Kyle Canyon Road, and to settle Moccasin and 95 LLC versus City of Las Vegas, case number A627506 in the Eighth Judicial Court, $1,150,000, City Facilities Capital Project Fund. This is in Councilman Ross's ward, and Mr. Gerbic, please.
Your Honor, this item is in order, and I recommend approval.
Councilman Beers, on behalf of Councilman Ross.
Your Honor, I'd recommend the fellow staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you very much. There's a motion, please vote. And please post. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to agenda item 45, discussion for possible action to approve settlement at Ken Riddle versus City of Las Vegas, Ed Al, case number 2,07-CV-01127-RCJ-CVCF in the United States District Court for the District in Nevada, $500,000 general fund. Mr. Gerbic.
Your Honor, this item is in order, and I recommend approval.
Thank you. Councilman Mayor Protem?
Motion to approve, Mayor.
Thank you very much. There's a motion, please vote. And please post. Thank you, and that motion carries. Item number 46 has been withdrawn, is that correct? Item number 47, discussion for possible action regarding, excuse me, an appeal of a work card denial for Michael Gamberone DB at Carrabba's Italian Grill, 8771 West Charleston Boulevard. This is in your ward, Councilman Beers. Is the applicant present? And Ms. Duttleston, good afternoon or morning.
Good morning, Your Honor. Karen Duttleston, Business Licensing Manager. Under Las Vegas Municipal Code 6.86, an applicant aggrieved by the decision of Metro with respect to the Genova work card mail appealed the decision to identify any errors of law or fact in the connection with Metro's report. Also, in that same section, there is a requirement that an appeal shall include a statement from a prospective employer in support of the applicant's employment. At this point in time, Business Licensing has reported that we did not find any errors in the report that was presented to you in your confidential binders from Metro, and the employer has declined to provide that letter of support. I received and I forwarded to the clerk's office this morning a statement from the legal representatives of Carrabba, and it states, "This firm represents Carrabba's Italian Grill LLC, Carrabba's in Nevada. This confirms that Carrabba's is not in support of Mr. Michael Jambroni in the appeal of his work card denial. As such, Carrabba's will not be in attendance at the city council meeting tomorrow." And that was filed with the clerk's office this morning. So at this point in time, we would recommend denial.
Thank you. Was there any statement you'd wish to make on this?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes.
And would you state your name for our record, please?
My name's Michael Jambroni, and things changed in the last couple of days. I've been doing everything I've been asked for the last two months since I was denied. There were statements in support, but corporate, if I could just read a statement so I don't stumble too much. I know I made a lot of, I've made many mistakes that will always follow me. It is incredibly difficult to find a job in this economy. Beyond that, to actually find someone willing to hire an ex-felon is quite a challenge. Against all odds, Carrabba's on Charleston was willing to give me a chance. I went and paid to receive a health card, then an alcohol awareness card, and finally went and got my, went to get my sheriff's card, and I was denied. I've invested every spare dollar I've had to gain my other cards, purchased my uniform, which are slacks, dress shirts, and ties. I went through training, I have done everything that has been asked of me by the Department of Public Safety, and done everything to form a proper appeal. I am motivated and driven person. I'm asking for the opportunity to have a job that is not only desirable, but perfect for my personality and gives me the freedom to go back to college and complete a degree. A day or two ago, Legal for Carrabba's Corporate decided they couldn't sponsor me to obtain my sheriff's card because they had to think of liability and their many other stores. And I totally understand that they can't put themselves at risk under one hire. I respect that. That being said, that doesn't change the fact that I still am wanted at Carrabba's on Charleston. If I can obtain a sheriff's card, they will hire me. They've even told me that if I don't have a sheriff's card, I could be a host, though it's not very realistic for me to do because with bills, and I mean, I have to pay Public and Safety at least $70 to $80 a month. That's under minimum, but it's the most that I can afford. But you have documents that were given, I don't know if you have them anymore, that the managing partner, managing partner of Carrabba's on Charleston was fully aware of my history and was very supportive, but she has to follow what corporate dictates, and I understand that. I would be walking away with $30 a night to be a host, so it's not really a feasible job for me. I'll take whatever I can get at this point, so I'm not going to turn my nose up to a job. I'll take it and move forward and try to go through appeals on other, you know, I have to find another restaurant that would be willing to hire me. This is the first place that gave me an opportunity. I've went to so many, like, I've done, I've spent weeks at places working for little to no money just to show them. I said, "I'll do a working interview, I'll work for free. If you don't like me, then you can." And it was one reason or another, like, you know, my history does take a part, but other places couldn't, just couldn't afford to have me. They're like, "We want you here, but we can't." The one place that actually wants me, I get denied because of the Sheriff's Department, and I respect that. They made no mistake, you know, I committed a crime, I was convicted in 2007, I served time, I'm a totally changed person. I know that I don't have the support from Carrabba's Corporate, and I know that it's hard for you to just take from my word that I do have a job there. I'm going to try to accomplish getting some kind of letter that would say that I still have a job there, just not without a sheriff's card. And they're not supporting me to get the sheriff's card, but they don't have a problem hiring me if I have it. Same thing would go for, you know, I could use that sheriff's card to work at other places. There's so many businesses that hire ex-felons, but, or at least are stated that they hire ex-felons, but they require a sheriff's card, and it would be a great help, and it would give me options as opposed to maybe taking the couple of jobs that are offered to work at McDonald's, you know, something that could actually benefit my life, you know, where at Carrabba's, there's time, so it's an evening job, so I could do school in the morning, you know, and there's just, it gives me opportunity, it's a perfect place for me to be, and I'm just hoping that getting a sheriff's card is something I can obtain sometime in the near future, if it's possible.
Thank you. Ms. Duttleston, sheriff card opportunities, does, that has been given information to you which causes you to make this recommendation?
Our--
It's from Metro.
Metro issues a report. Once an applicant appeals the denial of their work card, Metro issues a report with the background history that caused them to make that decision on the work card, which was denial, and that is included in your confidential binders, and Metro is here. They can certainly discuss that report with you if you would like to hear that, or the applicant can. At that point, it comes to us. We have to look at the code, and the code clearly states that the reasons for appeal are, that there are errors, and often applicants will bring extenuating circumstances to you, that it has been a long time since they have had issues, and this applicant is currently still under supervision. So the extenuating circumstances Metro did not feel were there in this case, to bring that forward to you, as well as the code requires that the employer provide a letter of support to the city council, and they have made it clear to me that they declined to do that.
From National. One other question, is there such a thing as a conditional or provisional sheriff's card?
That's a question we would have to ask Metro. In my understanding, you can certainly condition those work cards, how you would like to do that. As I spoke with the applicant earlier, there are other job opportunities at this Carrabba's that does not require a work card. There may also be opportunities for this position in other jurisdictions. The city is one jurisdiction that requires a work card for a server or a waiter in a place that sells alcohol, so the waiter would be serving the alcohol. In Clark County, for example, only the bartender or the person pouring that alcohol is required to have a work card, actual servers are not. So he may be eligible for the same job at another Carrabba's in another jurisdiction.
Thank you. That's very clear, and I would certainly suggest that it seems to me, because of the information that's been shared, you really need to establish your pattern of everything that you look and say to be and that you're changed, and unfortunately, you cannot go back. I'm sure you wish a thousand times over that you could have gone back and done differently. But to me, if there are other opportunities, the key is, and I would know it as an employee, that I'd like you to prove yourself and show yourself as just doing a great job wherever that is, and then come back and reapply to the institution to show, "I've done three years, absolutely clean record, I'd like to have you come out in support of me," and then you would have all the people that work at the entity in support of you. So at this point, I'm going to ask Councilman Beers.
Mayor, could I?
Oh, excuse me, Councilwoman Tarquin.
I just wanted to ask a question. They have said that they will not write a letter for them. Have they given any indication that they would hire him?
This is the only correspondence that they forwarded to me. I've requested for several days to meet with them, to--
I've requested for several days to meet with them, to get information from them, and this is the only response that I received.
Thank you. Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Karen, so he's here because, Michael's here because he is applying for a job at a place that serves alcohol, and that's the reason, correct?
He wants to be a waiter or a server, and in the course of that duty, he would be taking orders for alcohol, he would be serving alcohol to tables.
So any entry-level position sooner or later in a restaurant, you're going to end up being involved with a work card, sooner or later, because you're going to move to the top, you're going to be supervising, or you're going to be serving.
I would assume that, yes, that would be the case.
Right. And the same thing with slot machines and gambling, you know. So, Michael, you were put in a difficult position, I guess. You put yourself in a difficult position. You were only seventeen. The DA, as this former DA liked to do, was convict anybody regardless of their age. So in this case, you were seventeen, they threw you right up into the adult category and put you in the pen with all the big boys where you could learn more about crime. And yet, you came out and you seemed to stand up well, make an excellent first impression. I just think you need to, you know, just change occupations, my friend. I mean, you've got to go to something that doesn't require this stuff until you rebuild your resume. You've got a seven-year-old child?
Yes.
And my God, you should be given a break. But this is the kind of area where an employer, a corporate employer, is spineless, because they are, they got lawyers, they say, "Well, you know, something happens, we might get sued, and then we'll be in trouble because we hired this guy and we knew he had a felony record." So I'd stay away from these large corporations, and I'd get into something where the person who meets you is the one who can hire you and the one who can keep you going, but not in the restaurant business, not in the gambling business. This is, this town has hundreds of occupations where a person like you could become a salesman, could become very wealthy doing the things that don't require work cards from governmental entities. And I suggest you change your direction right away. Cook at home, and forget about cooking for someplace that serves alcohol, and get into the business of business, because you're undoubtedly talented enough and you make a wonderful impression. Looks like you educated yourself along the way. So, Your Honor, that was just my bit of two cents advice for someone who, in a normal circumstance, probably would do quite well in any other occupation.
Well, and too, we're all parents up here, so I think we look at you. I don't know, nobody, well, yeah, I guess everybody here could be of age to have someone your age. And so we look at you with motherly and fatherly affection in hopes that you just keep going and do the right thing. So it's just personal opinions from us. Councilman Beers?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I share everyone's opinion up here, and then add to what Councilman Coffin said, the alternative is to get your employer to come here, or to talk to our licensing director. We can't do anything without that. We just simply can't do anything. So, go ahead, yeah. You have to hit the button on your microphone.
Oh, sorry, the right button? If I, like, I understand that they're never going to sponsor me to get the sheriff's card, but if I can bring in some kind of proof that they will hire me having, if I'm given the sheriff's card, does that make a difference, or is it?
About once a month, we get someone rehabilitating themselves like you and their employer standing right here. And the employer says, "Yep, I know all about this, and I am willing to give this young man a chance." That's what we have to have.
And I would make a comment here. From what I understand from Ms. Duttleston, this came from corporate. And if you were in any other eatery cocktail lounge that was owned here and separate from a huge corporate structure, you'd be better off. Because that would have to be overcome, even if you had the employer here taking it on himself or herself to hire you, to get your sheriff's card. Heaven forbid something happens, he's lost his job because corporate has a policy, corporate in the United States. So if you could find, and not to say that you don't go forward with it, but if you could find a similar type of restaurant that was owned and only operated somewhere in Nevada, you'd probably be better off. Then that person, as the owner, can come up and say, "I take a chance on Michael. I believe him, I've watched him, I know who he is, I've seen him grow and develop and be the person." Your issue is, and has nothing to do with anything personal, it's a corporate legal decision because of exposure and liability. And so that's why, I mean, if there were some other place like Carrabba's, and I've eaten there, wonderful food, but there are plenty of other places.
Right. I do understand that. The one great thing, well, one of many great things about Carrabba's was that Lindsey Whiskins is a managing partner of that store, and she, first day that I met her, she's like, "I don't care what you did in your past, you know, you were seventeen, I understand." I was like, "Great." And I was like, "I have no experience. I've been, you know, I was gone from the time I was seventeen till the time I was twenty-three." So she said, "I don't want you to have experience. I don't want you to have bad habits. I want to teach you to be a server the way I want you to be a server," which is great. And it gave me, you know, I did get to train, you know, and I got to learn, I just unfortunately don't have the experience, and, you know, so I understand that I'm going to have to seek other means. I've tried sales jobs.
Or unless she has some influence over the corporate legal department. And I would say that is very remote, unless she's a senior partner of the board or something.
Right. Well, thank you very much.
We don't have much control over our corporate attorney over here either. He drives us batty, so we're kind of sympathetic. We don't have any choice but to move to deny the appeal. But again, you've heard what we've said, you need to find a corporate employer who can anticipate. You don't want to invest time in it. Let me put it this way, you don't want to invest your time in a corporate employer if this is going to happen again. So bring this up at the outset, and/or find a non-national restaurant that would take you on. Keep working at it.
Thank you.
That was my motion.
Okay. I would add one more thing. I do know of a lot of establishments here, that from everything you're talking about, who you are, the way you've presented yourself, and the comments from council, you're very hirable. So anyway, there's a motion, please vote, and please post. And we followed staff's recommendation, but keep at it. This is just a learning piece of it all, you'll get there, just keep going, don't quit. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
And Madam Mayor, I just might want to add, we've had other people in somewhat similar situations to you who have come where it was a non-corporate situation, and we were able to grant it.
I will pursue everything you suggested.
You'll get there.
Yeah.
Just go at it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Duttleston, appreciate it. Okay, we will now move on to Agenda Item Forty-eight, Boards and Commissions. Abeyance Item for Possible Action Traffic and Parking Commission. Betty Craig, term expires 5/15/2014, who has resigned. Procedure for this board requires appointment by the mayor with confirmation by the city council. The seat is for Councilwoman Tarkanian's recommendation. The option is to appoint new ward one resident to the seat for a four-year term. Councilwoman Tarkanian, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, we sent that to you, Beverly. Do you have it there? I don't have it in front of me.
Yes, ma'am, it's Stephanie Allen.
Yes, Stephanie Allen, who's a small businesswoman. Well, let's say she's a woman who's operating a small business. And she has done a tremendous job in working with the community and attempting to renovate the Charleston area that we're working on now. I think she'd be very good, because she's also very interested in traffic, parking, and all that other type of situation because of what's happening on Charleston.
So that's your motion?
That's my motion.
All right, there's a motion, I think. It's my motion to appoint Ms. Allen?
Yes.
To fill this position, please. And please cast your vote, and please post. And that appointment carries, and we thank Betty Craig for her service. And the next, Item Forty-nine, for Possible Action Traffic and Parking Commission. John Phillips, term expiration October 18th of 2012. Procedure for this board requires appointment by the mayor with confirmation by the city council. This seat is for Councilman Anthony's recommendation. Options are reappoint Mr. Phillips, or appoint a new ward for resident to this seat. Mayor Protam, do you have a recommendation?
Can I obey this for thirty days? That's my motion.
Okay, there is, I will make that motion that we obey this for thirty days at the request of Mayor Protam Anthony.
That would be November 7th.
November 7th. And so I've made a motion to obey it, and please vote on that. And that motion carries. We move on to Item Fifty, Abeyance Item for Possible Action Traffic Signal Capital Improvements Advisory Committee. Betty Craig has resigned. Appointment of a new member to replace Ms. Craig. Mr. Cervantes is to make any comments here, he's on my list. And Councilwoman, I believe, again, did you make a recommendation?
No, it was my understanding that these two items, the Traffic and Parking Commission, went together with the Traffic Signal Capital Improvements, but I'm not sure about that. No, they are now separate boards completely. They are now separate? Okay, then, no. I think he has someone that you thought would be good.
And, I want to say about this, Director of Public Works, this is really an appointment from council, so whoever you desire. In the past, we have had the same person that served on Traffic Park Commission, also be on the Traffic Advisory Commission. It's not required, there can be different persons, but in the past, it's been the same person serving on both boards.
Okay. So I guess, since we don't have, does anybody have a recommendation here? Let's obey that one also.
Well, oh, okay.
Because they're separating them now.
Okay. What you're saying is, in the past, we put them together, and now we can put them together or not put them together.
There's nothing to prohibit the same person serving on both boards.
It prohibits it, okay.
It's permitted, it's not required, it's permitted, and in the past, that's the way it's been handled.
Okay, then, we have to obey.
Thank you. And I think your staff may have already moved a bit on this with you and have some lists of yours.
Right, right.
So if we could obey this, please, to the November, what is it, 7?
November 7.
November 7th, that's not right, Councilwoman. And if you'll double-check with Kim and Roman on that. Thank you. So that's my motion. We will obey it to November 7th, please, if you'll vote, and please post. And that motion carries. Agenda Item Fifty-one, Abeyance Item for Possible Action Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission. Letitia Lee Heenan, term expires 1/7/2013, who has resigned. Options are appoint a new member to fill the unexpired term of Letitia Lee Heenan. Any member of the city council may make this recommendation. Does anyone have a recommendation to make? I see Councilman Beers.
Your Honor, I have to apologize for this item having been obeyed. I started by explaining the immense shoes that the person following Lee Heenan would have to fill, and everyone turned me down flat. So I shifted my pitch around, because I've done a few sales jobs in my life, and then started not describing exactly why we have this opening. And I managed to recruit a fellow named Richard Becker.
Richard Becker?
Richard Becker.
Okay.
Not related to those Beckers.
Okay.
But a talented entrepreneurial writer, acquaintance of mine, who is a City of Las Vegas resident, has a couple of young children, and an interest in this area. And so I would move appointing Mr. Becker to fill the remaining unexpired term of Ms. Heenan.
Thank you. There is a motion. Would you please vote? And please post. And Mr. Becker, not related to those Beckers, whoever those Beckers are, has now been appointed. Thank you very much. You will notify him, please? Thank you very much. And we'll move on to Item Fifty-two, Recommending Committee Bill, eligible for adoption at this meeting. Bill Number 2012-44. For Councilman Barlow, do you wish to have the bill read?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
Mr. Gerbit, please.
Thank you, Councilman, thank you, Your Honor. Bill Number 2012-44, First Amendment, Orders Relating to the Downtown Centennial Plan Revising the Provisions Governing Parking Lots and Establishing Standards and Processes Special Event Parking Lots and Temporary Parking Lots and Providing for Related Matters.
I'm Durval. Councilman, do you have a motion?
Yes, Mayor. I move to follow, move for approval.
Thank you very much. This motion, please vote, and please post. And that motion carries. We'll move on to Item Number Fifty-three, Bill Number 2012-45. Councilman Barlow, do you wish to have the bill read?
Yes, Mayor.
Mr. Gerbit?
Thank you, Councilman. Bill Number 2012-45, Orders to Update the Regulations pertaining to the Downtown Transportation Center to Reflect the Change in Its Location and Name and Provide for Related Matters.
Thank you very much. Councilman Barlow, do you have a motion?
Move for approval.
There's a motion approved, please vote, and please post. The Bonneville Transit System Building is a platinum building, very exciting. Now to look out our windows and see that. Item Number Fifty-four, Bill Number 2012-47. Councilman Barlow, do you wish to have the bill read?
Yes, Mayor.
And Councilman, Bill Number 2012-47, Orders to Authorize the Issues of the Registered Taxable Local Improvement District Bond Series 2012 for the City of Las Vegas, Nevada, for Special Improvement District Number 1507, Jones Boulevard, El Con Road, to Horse Drive, and Grand Teton Drive, Maverick Street, to Decatur Boulevard, to Finance the Construction of Local Improvements and Providing for Other Related Matters.
Thank you very much. Councilman Barlow?
Move for approval.
Thank you. This motion, please vote, and please post. Thank you, that carries. Items Fifty-five and Fifty-six, Bills 2012-28 and 2012-48 are eligible for adoption at a later meeting. So we will move on now to new bills. And Item Fifty-seven, Items Fifty-seven through sixty, Bills 2012-49 through 2012-52, does that make sense? Will be heard of the Recommending Committee meeting on Tuesday, October 16th, 2012. The new bills, 2012-49 through 2012-52, excuse me, one minute, please. I'm not sure I can do this, but I'd like Bill Number Fifty-nine to come back to full council, because obviously, there's some interest in this. And so what I'd like to do is take Bills, new Bills 2012-49 through 52, well, that doesn't make sense, Fifty-nine's beyond that. I guess these are all okay then, correct?
If I could step in, Your Honor?
Yes.
If the goal is to send that one bill, that one bill alone, Item Number Fifty-nine, to full council recommending, and send everything else to regular recommending, I think we can give that direction to the clerk.
Okay.
And she will do that. And then the question will be finding a date and time when everybody can be present for that committee of the whole to hear that particular bill. But we can work that out after the meeting, if that's your desire.
Okay, yes.
We can just give that general direction.
So, and do I make that as the motion?
Just, if you, just this direction, if you'd like, I'll read the bills, and then I'll have the clerk pick up the date.
Please, okay, please.
Very good. Thank you, Your Honor. Bill Number 2012-49, Orders to Amend the Unified Development Code to Correct Errors Made in Ordinance Number 6210 Regarding the Treatment of Outdoor Storage Uses in Restaurants and Productive matters. Bill Number 2012-15, Orders to Appeal and Replace LVMC Chapter 13.12 Pertaining to the Planned Streets and Highways and Provide for Related Matters. Bill Number 2012-51, Orders to Appeal and Replace Chapter 13.36 of the Municipal Code Relating to the Use of Parks and Other Recreational and Cultural Facilities and Provide for Related Matters. And finally, Bill Number 2012-52, In Orders to Adopt a Map Pertaining to the Downtown Centennial Plan That Was Intended to Have Been Adopted by Ordinance Number 6208 and Providing for Related Matters.
Thank you, Mr. Gerbit. All right, we have another question here. Okay. And is this notification correct, 2012-52, when I'm talking about Agenda Item? And is this notification correct, 2012-52, when I'm talking about Agenda Item 59 under new bills?
The ordinance number is different from the agenda, so we're fine.
Okay.
You'll be okay.
Thank you very much. All right, so that's my motion, and if you will, please vote.
We don't need to vote. They're just simply assigned to committee.
Oh, it's assigned then to our recommending committee, and that will be Councilman. You wanted to ask a question before I pass it on?
Yes, ma'am. I'm still a new member of the council, so I'm still kind of learning the ropes.
Okay.
And for fun, I've been attending the recommending committee meetings lately, and perhaps...
You aren't allowed to speak, because that puts four in there, sir.
Correct, I don't speak. I just attend, but I'm pretty sure I saw the recommending committee recommend approval on 2012-51 yesterday morning. So why were we sending it to recommending committee again?
In fact, I just want to say you asked questions about it at the CMO briefing.
Right, and I was going to jump in before Councilman Beers to...
Oh, maybe, I don't know.
Bring that forward as well.
So what, you guys did move that out of recommending, right? If that's the same bill?
If it's the same one. I know we discussed it. I know we discussed the topic.
Councilman, it was 2012-47 and 20-12-48 were on yesterday.
Ah.
And that was not the parks.
What, and Bev, if you don't mind, what was 47 and 48?
47 is the authorization of the issuance of the taxable local improvement bond for 1507, and 48 was the amends the Unified Development Code to revise the standards for state signs advertising.
My error.
Okay.
Okay.
I stand corrected.
We caught you in one.
Thank you.
Wow, whoopee. Okay, so there is a motion, and please, what, I don't, it's just done, and it will be assigned to Councilman Anthony Barlow and Coffin in recommending. Okay, so now we move on to planning, right? Oh, my goodness. Okay, we will then recess until 1:00. Thank you all. Okay, we will reconvene this afternoon session of City Council. For the first time in my life, my feet aren't touching the floor. Okay, so we are starting off with business items in the afternoon session, and this is item number 61. For possible action, any items from the afternoon session that council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken, table withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Councilman Anthony?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 71, RLC 46560, applicant Easy Pawn Owner Rainbow Sahara Center, number 2, 2200, South Rainbow Boulevard. Applicant has asked that be obeyed till November 7, 2012, and that will be my motion.
Okay, anyone else with a request? I understand from Mr. Fagin, planning that we do have a correction to item 64, but that would be different. Or do you want to enter that now?
Since we're on the microphone, I might as well. On item number 64, I just have a correction to the street number. It should actually be 100 North City Parkway. The parcel ID number is correct, and so the advertising stands on the item.
So it is not 110, but 100?
Correct.
Okay, would you read, that's read into the record, Madam Clerk?
We'll do that under the one motion, one vote.
Thank you. Okay, so there's a motion. Please vote. And please post. We are voting for any items that are being held, and the one was read was 71, which is the only one, which can be held till? Okay, moving on to one motion, one vote items. Items 62 to through 69 may be considered in one motion, vote. They are considered routine. Non-public and public hearing items with no condition changes, except for the one we read for 64. That is where the address should be 100, not 110 North Parkway. Yes, yes.
I want to know the criteria one more time for one motion, one vote, because what if there have been protests on something at a lower level? Maybe the planning commission level, or would you, would you have that then taken off? Or would that, would PC forward that to us with the one motion, one vote? I'm just curious where we know there's been a reason to make it that.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, if I may jump in and respond to the question. The items that are included on the one motion, one vote portion of the agenda are typically items that are in conformance with the city zoning code or have very minimal waivers associated with them, and typically do not have objections from members of the public. And so for that reason, we place them on the one motion, one vote portion of the agenda. If for some reason we do receive a late response from members of the public, these items can always be pulled off the one motion, one vote portion of the agenda and discussed by council if they feel it's appropriate.
Okay. When I was looking at the history, Your Honor, of the gun club, the automatic weapons and machine gun club that's going to be opening up on the Boulevard South in my ward, I noticed that it had moved forward and upward on a one motion, one vote, but it had a lot of protests at the lower level. So I just want to know if those protests, in fact, in the future, which I'm not bringing that issue up now, except to say, I don't know who makes the decision. It seems like if there are a lot of protests, we ought to have known about it.
And what item is that?
Oh, that was, that's two years ago. Council acted on an automatic weapons thing that is now going to be allowed to be operating in my ward. And it came up on a one motion, one vote, even though there had been a lot of protests at the lower level, two years ago.
So in fact, Mr. Fag, you would be saying that if, in fact, there were a rush of objections that arrived between the time of this printing and today, you or the city clerk would bring it to our attention?
Certainly, we'd be happy to do that, or else if also, if you notice in your packets that you see objections there, that any member of City Council is welcome to pull that off that portion of the agenda.
So therefore, if you had a slew of phone calls or objections coming into your ward or to the office, you too then would bring that to the council? Thank you.
Isn't he saying, though, that if the people come to the meeting, we wouldn't know they came to the planning committee, would we? Those aren't written down anyplace. I think that's what he's saying.
I'm glad you kind of interpreted it for me.
Okay, and we have a question also from the public.
Yeah, in essence, it was. There were a lot of protests two years ago when this gun club thing moved up, but when the council saw it, it was one motion, one vote. And so you can see why my, I'm perplexed by how it got through without any further discussion. But that was two years ago. It's not before us today. Thank you.
And you wanted to make a comment here?
I'd like to say, under that, in the printing there, it says, "Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the city not in agreement, we can speak out." And I have no qualms about coming up and speaking out on it.
Okay, thank you. I'm so glad we have alert citizens that read. So I will go back to this now. Items 62 through 69 may be considered in one motion, one vote. They are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items with no condition changes. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the council not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item or move from this portion of the agenda. So hearing none.
Wait, I just had a question, if I could, on item 62. Could we just pull it so I could ask the question?
Certainly, we will.
Unless you want me to ask it now.
Well, since we're asking, go ahead.
Okay, I just wondered is, how is it that they're able to do this with the fountain when we've, you know, we've had all that water authority business about saying, "Take out fountains"? Is it a recyclable water feature, or what is it on item number 62?
He's going quickly through his book, and he will answer you in one second.
Madam Mayor, through you. Councilwoman, Title 14 of the city's municipal code provides the requirements and guidance for water features and water feature exemptions. In this particular case, the applicant is applying for a water feature exemption, which is permitted under Title 14. Associated with that, they have to pay a fee, and the fee for this particular application is $4,270, which is due upon approval of the application, and then they pay an annual fee for continuing to operate the water feature. And so essentially, per the code, what they're allowed to do is to pay a fee, and then they can continue to operate.
So it's not recyclable, it's you get it from money?
No.
Thank you.
And there was another comment before. I read these all?
Yes, Mayor, I would like to pull item number 64 forward, please.
Okay, item 64 is going to be pulled forward then, and I will read the rest, and then we will make a motion, please. 62 DIR 46495, Water Feature Exemption, applicant owner son, City Summerlin Community Association, INC. 9105 Del Webb Boulevard, Ward 4, Councilman Anthony. Number 63 RQR 45614, applicant Lamar Central Outdoor LLC, owner ZJNR Properties for an existing 55-foot-tall, 14-foot-by-48-foot off-premise sign at 3920 West Charleston Boulevard. This is in Councilwoman Tarkanian's Ward 1. We are pulling and holding item number 64, so I will read it at the end. RQR 45620, applicant Clear Channel Outdoor, owner WMC3 Associates LLC for five existing off-premise signs on property bounded by US 95 I-15 and Grand Central Parkway. This is in Ward 5, Councilman Barlow's Ward. Number 66 RQR 45616, applicant Lamar Central Outdoor LLC, owner GES Family LP for an existing 55-foot-tall, 14-foot-by-48-foot off-premise sign on the west side of R&amp;K Gregson Highway, US 95, South of Vegas Drive, Councilwoman Tarkanian, Ward 1. RQ, number 67, RQR 45617, applicant, Clear Channel Outdoor, owner O'Rourke Family LP for an existing 65-foot-tall, 14-foot-by-48-foot off-premise sign at 1716 Highland Avenue. This is in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. Number 68, RQR 45618, applicant Clear Channel Outdoor. Number sixty-eight, RQR four-five-six-one-eight, applicant Clear Channel Outdoor. Owner Ferris Investments, Inc. for an existing sixty-five-foot-tall, fourteen-foot-by-forty-eight-foot off-premise sign at two-oh-oh-two Highland Avenue, Ward three. Again, Councilman Coffin's Ward. Number sixty-nine, RQR four-five-six-two-one, applicant Lamar Central Outdoor LLC. Owner Simon Inc. for an existing forty-five-foot-tall, fourteen-foot-by-forty-eight-foot off-premise sign at thirty-two-oh-nine West Sahara, Ward one, Councilwoman Tarkanian. All items are recommended for approval by staff. Items sixty-three through sixty-nine are public hearings, which I now declare open. Anyone wishing to be heard on these items save sixty-four, which will take after. Anyone wishing to hear on any of these other items? Hearing none. I will close the public hearing. Councilman Anthony, do you have a motion to approve items sixty through sixty-nine without items sixty-four included?
So moved.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote. Please carry, and now we will go back to item sixty-four. RQR four-five-six-one-five, applicant Clear Channel Outdoor. Owner Parkway Center LLC for an existing seventy-one-foot-tall, thirty-foot-by-twenty-two-foot off-premise sign with digital display at, as corrected by Mr. Fag and Planning, at one hundred North City Parkway. Councilman Barlow.
Yes, Mayor. Mr. Carter?
Yes, sir.
I understand that you are leaving the city to get married.
I knew this had nothing to do with the bill, Lord. Leaving the city to be married, yes. I am going to Michigan a week from today to, well, a week from Friday to get married.
And could you repeat your name, please, for the record?
Thank you, Mayor. Rod Carter, on behalf of Clear Channel Outdoor, twenty-eight eighty, Meade Avenue.
Thank you.
And you do realize that we could have used all the money that you're going to spend in Michigan, right here in the state of Nevada? You do realize that, right?
You know, I could use the money that I spent, too, as I've just put myself into poverty, perpetual poverty, getting married. And if she hears this, I am so dead. And Mom, nothing from you, so we're all excited, and we're all looking forward to it. Thank you.
So by approving this item, I'm pretty sure this would at least get you one more paycheck to get you to Michigan, right?
Yeah, for sure.
Mayor and Council, I would move to follow Rod's recommendation of approval, subject to all conditions on this item. And congratulations to you and your new bride.
Thank you very much.
And your expanded family forthcoming.
I appreciate that.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. There's a motion. Please vote. And please post.
Thank you, Mayor.
Wonderful. Troubles are just beginning. Okay, item number seventy. This is ROC four-six-five-five-seven. Review of Condition and a Public Hearing. Applicant EZ-Pawn, owner Cheyenne Jones LLC. For possible action on request for a review of condition of an approved special-use permanent, SUP one-eight-two-six-six. To delete Condition A, which limited the hours of operation to Monday through Saturday from seven AM to seven -- excuse me, nine AM to seven PM. Except hours, December hours shall be from nine AM to nine PM and Sunday from ten AM to five PM at six-oh-three-two West Cheyenne Avenue. This is in Ward six, and Councilman Ross. Staff recommends denial. It is a public hearing, and is the applicant or representative present? Would you care to make your statement?
Sure. Mayorin Perry, and I was just telling these guys, sometimes I say the wrong address, our old address, but it's one hundred City Parkway, just like the last one we read in. And I'm representing EZ-Pawn. This application requests a review of the original hours of operation, and the variation in closing times during different parts of the year, as well as the fact that other similar businesses stay open later, has created a little bit of confusion among the store's patrons. And EZ-Pawn is very interested in remaining a positive factor in this neighborhood, in a shopping center that hasn't done as well as it could have in the past few years. As noted by staff, there are at least, not that, when I checked before, there have been no complaints. There haven't been any cards received in opposition, and these guys want to do everything they can to remain successful, and we respectfully request your approval. If there are any questions, my clients are here and happy to answer.
Thank you very much. It is a public hearing. I declare it open. Anybody wishes to come forth and make comment? Okay, any questions or comments from council? With that, knowing that Councilman Ross, as I announced, had to leave for Elko for the Nevada Cities Meeting, Councilman Beers is taking over.
Your Honor, I would move that we follow staff's recommendation for approval to change the limited hours of operation from nine in the morning until nine at night, Monday through Sunday.
You're absolutely okay with that?
Okay, there is a motion. Please vote. And please post.
Thank you.
Well done. Thank you very much.
If I may, just really quickly, if there's anyone who came for the item that was being held, I'm happy to talk to them. I don't want anyone to have showed up for this meeting, or the one that was held, it's the same applicant. If anyone needs to talk to me, I'm here and happy to.
Very kind. Mr. Fag, you get that. Okay.
Mayor, before you go on to the next item, which is to set the dates, we need to return, with your permission, to an item on the morning agenda. There was a motion made on a bill that was First Amendment, and while I read it as First Amendment, the motion wasn't to accept it as First Amendment, so I would ask it returned to item number fifty-two. That's Bill number twenty-twelve dash forty-four. I would ask for a member of the council to vote to rescind, and then take a second vote to adopt as First Amendment.
Okay. Who had made the motion in the first place?
Wouldn't matter, since it was unanimous. Anybody can make a motion to rescind.
Do you want to make the motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion to rescind item number fifty-two.
Okay, there's a motion. Please vote. Please post.
And now a motion to adopt.
Wait, hasn't passed yet. That passes. It's been rescinded now.
And now a motion to adopt Bill number twenty-twelve dash forty-four, First Amendment.
So moved.
Thank you. There's a new motion. Please vote. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
And one more item, Your Honor. During the break, Councilman Barlow asked a pretty good question, and that is why we are sending item number fifty-nine, Bill number twenty-twelve fifty-one. That's the municipal code changes to parks and other recreational uses to both the recommending committee of the whole and then probably the next day to the council of the whole. The Clerk has sent me the excerpt of our charter, which says it may be referred for a recommending committee as opposed to must be. So with that, if you are okay with my making the record that this will not be sent to recommending committee, it'll simply go straight to council in the first place, and it'll be a public hearing on the date that it would normally be heard for consideration. Is that okay?
And we do not have to rescind and then vote that in, then?
That's correct, because it was not a motion. It's just a matter of correcting the record. And if everybody's okay with it being corrected that way, we'll just leave it and move on to item number seventy-two.
To my right, it's okay. Is it okay to the left? Yes, it is. We're all fine with that. Thank you very much. Okay, so why do I have a stick on seventy-one?
It's held in abeyance.
Fine. Seventy-one's been held in abeyance. Thank you very much. Item seventy-two, I would instruct the city clerk to set the public hearing dates and appeals from city planning commission, meetings, and dangerous building or nuisance litter abasements. Thank you very much. We are moving along on to item number seventy-three. Citizen participation, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject's on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium, give your name for the record, please. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? Hello? Please state your name.
My name is Ernie Loyah, and they call me Big Ern, and I'm here to introduce myself to you. I started a barbecue stand over here on Seventh to south of Fremont. I'm part of the downtown project with the container park that they're going to be building over there. They got a spot slated for me, so until then, I went ahead and asked them and got all the blessings and set up the barbecue stand, so I'm doing brisket, pork, chicken, ribs, hot links, set up all under the open air over here on Seventh between Fremont and Sixth. And the real reason I wanted to come down and talk to you guys is, number one, to introduce myself to you and let you guys know about that, invite you all to come down and have some barbecue lunch, okay? Open Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays, Fridays, eleven to three. Another thing I want to do is talk to you about this whole downtown project thing that's going on and everything that's happening, the redevelopment and what have you. And, you know, you read the papers and you watch the television, and everybody's talking about the economic, how it's going to turn everybody around, and socially, how it's going to turn everyone around. But there's another group in there, and that's the individuals, like myself, you know? I'm a fifty-something-year-old man, and to be able to have a chance like this, to be able to come in downtown and to be able to share my passion with people, my barbecue, my food, it all comes from here. It's all my own ruse, my own spices. It's what I like to do, okay? And to be able to have an opportunity, nowhere else would I be able to do something like this, okay? So Councilman Barlow, the downtown project, all the people that have been working right now, big thanks to them, and it's just literally making my dreams come true. Literally making my dreams come true. So when everybody starts talking about the redevelopment of downtown, remember, it goes all the way from the bottom line for you guys here and the city government for your budget, all the way down to the little guys like me that's just, you know, want to make a living, want to share my passion, and just want to be a part of downtown, you know? So that's why I'm here. Please, you guys, come and try my food, and hopefully we'll have a great relationship together.
Thank you. I hope you're here seven days a week soon.
We will. We're working on it. I mean, baby steps, you know? We just got to get over here, and step by step, yeah, we'll be working extended hours each day as well.
Right. Wonderful. Good luck to you. And Councilman Beers is already ready to leave here.
I have some questions, Your Honor.
Yes.
Two questions. Bigger and I'm on your website, and I'm not seeing a map to your location, so would you repeat that for me?
Okay, it's on Seventh Street, and I apologize for that. I get everything updated. Seventh Street, just south of Fremont, so it's between Fremont and Carson, right there.
Okay.
Downtown construction zone is what they're calling it right now. There's those office trailers, and I literally have a pop-up scan over there right now. You can't miss it. There's a big barbecue smoker.
That you see the smoke?
Exactly.
Okay, the second question's a little more personal.
Sure, sure, sure.
Had a little debate at my house this weekend, and you might be able to weigh in.
That's.
Boil the ribs or not?
Oh, no way. No, no. Whenever you do that, you're actually sucking some of the flavor out, okay? So it does make them tender, but it is at a cost. Keep the temperature low, keep it a little bit longer on the smoker, you'll be good to go.
Sounds like it'd just be easier to come to your place.
That's the best thing.
And then tell your wife you cooked it.
That's the best thing.
Right, way to go.
Mayor, thank you.
Yes, Councilman Barlow.
I had an opportunity on yesterday, my staff and I, to go over and visit a number of the new restaurants that have popped up downtown that did not have to come before the council for approval. And one is at the corner of Carson and Seventh, I believe, Eat.
Yeah.
And Natalie's Eat is at that corner. It used to be, I understand, a, maybe a small cafe or sandwich shop previously. She has just opened up, and she is doing a wonderful job. She's open for breakfast and lunch, and on the weekend, she's open for breakfast, brunch, and I believe dinner. Very cool spot to eat breakfast, and breakfast starts as early as seven AM. So for those of us in the downtown community looking for a place to eat breakfast on the way into the office, I would recommend that you stop by Eat at the corner of Seventh and Carson.
Traditional foods with a flair. Natalie is a, she was a chef over at one of the restaurants here at Caesar's Palace, and she puts her own twist on a lot of things. So she'll do things like a prime rib and hatch chili hash that she puts together for breakfast, which is incredible, and chicken fried steak, which was the best I ever had in my whole life, that was over at the Eat restaurant.
And for lunch on yesterday, it was packed, it was packed inside of Eat, and then I had an opportunity to meet Ern, and I went over and had barbecue yesterday. I had the.
Brisket.
Brisket, the barbecue brisket.
I hope you're working out, Councilman. There's an awful lot of eating in one day.
Hey, he's doing his job. What are you saying? He's doing his job.
He eats, he works out, and he comes to work.
I was touring all of the great restaurants in my ward downtown, which I am pleased to announce that my colleague to my left, Councilman Coffin, will be the new councilman of this area. But I'm glad that I was able to bring in all the infrastructure and all of the great eateries.
Yes, yes.
So that he can benefit after all my hard work of bringing in this business. So if you haven't stopped, please stop by. You have great food, and I'm looking forward to you setting up your full restaurant once the containers are in place. And so, Councilman Coffin, you have some pretty cool eateries that are coming after the redistricting. I just wanted to make sure that you had.
How was your presentation?
It was great.
Thank you.
And I'm glad that you were able to come down and make it, because I asked him if he would come down during public comment.
Thank you.
To express his delight working with the city of Las Vegas and the various departments as far as pushing through all of his permits in order that he may open up. And that's what needs to be said and celebrated, because a lot of times, Mayor and Council, we don't get an opportunity to get a follow-up as far as how well working with the city of Las Vegas from a private sector standpoint is really making a difference, as he mentioned, from our bottom line to their bottom line out on the street, making it happen each and every day. So Ern, thank you so very much and much success to you.
And also for the support, the city made it very easy as well, because a lot of times, somebody like myself that really doesn't, you know, like I said, I've been cooking and barbecuing my life, but the structure part of it, you know, didn't really know how to go about getting my permits to the health department, making sure I had everything right with the city, everybody I talked to, everybody I talked to was more than helpful as far as getting things done. And you go to the websites, and, you know, websites can be a little confusing, especially something you imagine like a city of Las Vegas. There's fifteen permits that I thought that I could be working under, you know, which one is the correct one? They were so helpful as a piece of cake.
Wonderful. Yeah, we have a great staff.
Yeah, it was really nice.
Certainly with one-stop shopping now, we're making it a heck of a lot easier. Are you going to be open later on First Friday?
We're working on that, yeah, because, again, we're all part of that group.
Because that's this Friday?
Yeah.
In two days.
Yeah, we might not be able to do it this Friday, but we're, because the location, we're a little outside of the zone, so we're working on where we might be able to get set up right there.
Good.
And still be, you know, benefits everybody.
Wonderful, and it is Councilman Barlow. It is wonderful.
And Mayor.
I know you really don't want to give up that area because.
I don't.
But it's forced. It's forced upon you.
Right.
But Mayor, but one thing that I would like to recommend is that we start to take a look at a lot of the businesses in the downtown and place them in the rotation for the council lunch, being that we have a number of places that we have already that service lunch, and maybe what we can do to help, you know, the small business owner who is looking to advance themselves, you know, with the assistance of the city of Las Vegas. You know, I'm pretty sure we can work you into the rotation of the council lunch as well.
Because when you're working on something like that, you would not believe, or maybe you guys will, whenever a small business like myself does get an order from a company, a school, city government, it makes a difference for our day, you know? We did a lunch right now, and it's going to make a big difference on my bottom line. You know, it's a new restaurant, so you can imagine, and it really makes a difference. So any kind of help we get like that is definitely appreciated.
So Councilman, you will put that through to the proper staff to get him on the list?
Yes.
Please. And there's a second to that soft motion.
And I see Scott Adams rapidly writing, so thank you, Mr. Adams. All right, so we look forward to you serving the council.
And thank you for coming.
In the rotation of all of our lunches, thank you.
Very good, thanks, I guess, a pleasure, privilege, and I appreciate it very much.
Thanks so much.
Okay, take care, Ern.
All right, thanks.
Good luck. Anyone else wishing to come forward, yes, please? The microphone is not on.
Thank you, Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. On Item Number 43, I want to state this, and I hope everybody listens carefully to this. Councilman Coffin, Councilman Beers, Councilman Barlow. In the municipal court, if there was ever anybody that's in the right place at the right time, the right person, it's Judge Cedric Kearns in the youth offenders' court, that really works. I know from... Okay, I wanted to get that out. Second thing is, on public comment about the schools, going back to the schools. When Brian Cram took over from Kenny Gwynn, they passed that huge bond issue to build all those schools, and the money ran out before 17 of them were even completed. So they came back to the voters for another increase in that. And during that time, they said if they would keep that mill levy after it expires to, for the maintenance and all that, for the future thing, they said that they would never ask us again for any money. Okay, so I just want to clarify that, because that's what happened. My problem with the schools is they have always been underfunded. They have, it is just, it's always been one damn Band-Aid after another, and it's not the way to run a school system. Case in point, I'm gonna show you something. If I could have the check. Councilman Barlow, you were saying about schools that's been run down that were built in the 60s. This school that you see right there was built in 1954 and 1955. It was designed by Frank Lloyd Wright. You can go to that school right now, and it looks immaculate, just the way it was on the opening day, when they first opened the doors to that. It's been well adapted, it's been well maintained. Right now, those kids that go to that school take a pride into that school that you can't even believe. Back in the early 50s, Life Magazine used to have, they used to have an issue on the top 10 school districts in the United States. This little Garden County school was there every time, less than 5,000 people in the county. This summer, they had a, on, they, the other thing was that that little town, 1,100 people, have produced more doctors per capita than anyplace else in the world. Now think of that, more than anyplace else in the world. I mean, it's something to be proud of. They can take a kid with a 100 IQ, and that is not college material, and they can, at the end of his career, he can have a graduate degree, two undergraduate degrees, and three technical degrees, one in laser. I mean, we're talking about, they can do miracles. And one of the things is that the people, they just keep going back. The current president of the school system was a product of that school system, and it's, what I'm trying to get back, there is, and the other thing I want to point out is, oh, two-thirds of all of the money that was raised in that county goes to the school system, two-thirds. They put it above roads and everything else, but look at what they come out with, and I'm telling you, it's amazing. And this Band-Aid approach, it's got to stop sometime, it's got to stop, we have to fund the schools right. And I'm real bitter about that, because, again, I say, they just come back time and time with more Band-Aids, and I can guarantee, I'll stay here right now, within six years, they're gonna go, they're gonna run out of money. They say that they're gonna be funded for six years, it's not gonna last, and even then, if all those air conditioning units are gonna go bluish, it isn't gonna last. And Councilman Barlow, you're absolutely right. Kenny Gwynn wrote his doctoral thesis on how air conditioning promotes to the education of children. You can go down to UNLV library and check out his doctoral thesis and read it, he's right. You can't teach kids like that, and here we are, putting more damn Band-Aids on this thing, and within six years, we're gonna be right back here. Thank you.
Sorry, I just have to ask a question, because you know that I respect and like you very much. There is no money in these bonds for maintaining the schools, and that's the problem, you're absolutely right, they're falling apart, but they're falling apart not because of the problems of misuse of monies in the school district, it's more that the legislature did not provide funds, or the people didn't want to provide funds, for whatever reason, we don't provide enough funds. Now, I don't wanna say that funding's going to do the difference, I think it's a bureaucracy, I think it's one of the worst and probably the strongest within the whole country, education, and there's much that needs to be done improving it, there's much that needs to be done here in Clark County, and I have fought for many years for that, but I do want to tell you that the reasons why that school, I could enumerate them to you sometime, might be very successful where we weren't successful here in Clark County are many, and it has to do with the environment you're in, and the place, and the location, and the families, and all of that, but what we've got to do is recognize the school district has to do better, much, much better, and also, and...
They can't do it without money. They can't do it without money, it takes, this is a capitalist system, it runs on money.
But where do you get the money? It doesn't come from these bonds, this is just capital, it's not maintenance, where do you get it?
But we underfund all of it.
What?
We underfund all of it, we underfund the operations too.
Okay, thank you, now, we appreciate your concern, and I think all of us up here realize how important our schools and children's education is, we thank you for your passion. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Well, hearing done, we'll move on to Item Number 74. Okay, city council recognition, comments made by individual city council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the city council unless that subject's on the agenda and scheduled for action. Is there any member of the city council who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda? I'm gonna start way down at the left, since you were last, last time, Councilman Coffin, anything?
Your Honor, I do not have the specific date in November, but in November, members of the city council, I think, are invited to go to Carson City for a major summit on local government, and the main topic will be home rule, and it will be essentially sending a message to the public and to the legislature that the members of city councils and county commissions and school boards around the country are grown up enough to begin to manage their affairs, but they need the permission of the legislature to regain their stature, because, in fact, it's so coincidental that we talk about school funding at this meeting today, but the public watching this broadcast, watching this meeting, has to understand that the history for the last 30 years has not been good, and that many of these things have been taken out of the hands of the local governments and the school districts. So, keep in mind that this is coming, and I think it is worthwhile participating in. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. Tomorrow, Coffee with the Councilmen, October 4th, please join me for Coffee and Conversation on Thursday, October 4th, from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. at Starbucks located at 751 North Rancho Drive at Bonanza Road. We will be, I will be there to discuss any Ward Five vision, and any questions or comments that you may have as far as how I may be able to achieve that goal or assist you in achieving your goal. This is a great way to talk with me about exciting events I am planning for the remainder of the year, there are so many ways to be involved with our community, so join me for a cup of coffee or tea, and I look forward to speaking with any resident or businessman or woman in the community as it relates to their expansion and their needs as well. Tomorrow, Coffee with the Councilman, I meet the first Thursday of every month at Starbucks, 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Tarkanian.
On this Saturday, October 6th, from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m., there will be a Grapes and Hops Festival at the Springs Preserve, 333 South Valley View. It's sponsored by the Par for the Cure organization, which is a nonprofit group dedicated to raising funds for breast cancer. Fine wines, beer, food, and music will be provided, and I just wanted to let Councilman Beers know that the Hops will be there for you. On October 13th, we are celebrating Disability Awareness Day at Pioneer Park, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Past years, we've had excellent turnouts, we have a focus on health and safety, and particularly on new activities and new equipment to assist the disabled, usually cutting-edge examples of what's available are shown at this celebration. And I wanted to just reemphasize what the mayor said this morning, that on Saturday, October 13th, all the fire station and all of the city wards will hold an open house from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. to promote fire prevention. It's appropriate time to focus on this topic, as this is the 101st anniversary of the very first National Fire Prevention Week, and the 141st anniversary of the Great Chicago Fire. And rather Mrs. O'Leary's cow caused that or not, it nearly destroyed Chicago, where the fire burned 22 hours, killed more than 250 people, left more than 100,000 homeless, and destroyed nearly 18,000 buildings. And on the 40th anniversary of this tragedy, fire officials from throughout the United States dedicated this day for Fire Prevention Day, and with the recent loss of lives in our city, from even members of our own family here within the city, to the young children, to the seniors, to the others, that we've had such a rash of fires recently, it's certainly obvious that fires, rather large or small, cause great tragedies, so we should be very careful, and hopefully people will go to that open house.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and as a matter of fact, which I did not bring with me, I did get notification back about the comments that were made on national TV this morning about the different types of sprinkler systems that are in our homes, the ones with the batteries, and yes, we really need to be looking into that, and our fire chief, in fact, will probably be sending out some type of notification to verify and validate that that is accurate, and there are better kinds and different types to be using. So you'll be hearing from the city, I'm sure, our city fire in that regard. And so, moving on to my mayor pro tem over here.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to invite everyone to the Walk and Roll for ALS. This is a great opportunity to support people that have ALS, to support family that have an individual that has ALS, and it's also a way to raise money to fight this particular disease. So, it will be held on Saturday, October 13th, at Police Memorial Park at Cheyenne and Metro Academy Way, which is right behind the Northwest Area Command. Registration for the event begins at 6:00 a.m. There is a 5K run that kicks it off at 8:00 a.m., and then, if you don't want to participate in the 5K, you just like to walk, that's great, that starts at 8:15 a.m. Minimum donations for participants from 5 to 17 is $25, 18 and older is $35. If you would like to sign up for this event, you can go to www.alskintera.org/walkandroll, or you can call 777-0500. You can get a team together to walk, you can make up t-shirts, you can get a team for the 5K, there's a lot of people that show up, and again, it's a great way to talk about this particular disease, ALS, and support those members that have it, and I will be out there with my staff, and look forward to seeing you all out there. Again, it's Saturday, October 13th, in the morning at Police Memorial Park. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Councilman Beers.
Well, thank you, Your Honor, I would first like to thank Councilwoman Tarkanian for recognizing the Hops, my family is descended from the Hops, and it was very nice. Last night was our inaugural Beers with Beers event, we had it out at Angel Park, which is a city-owned facility. I had a great time, I think by the end of the night, John, we'd taken, what, seven, seven incident reports for barking cats, so there may have been too, too much libation, I'm not sure, we're working through our notes from last night. This Saturday, on the 6th of October, is the Walk for Breast Cancer Awareness at the JW Marriott, 5K walk, $10 donation fee, starts at 8:00 in the morning, hope everyone will turn out for that. Weekend after that is the trunk-or-treat car show, which is an annual event that Councilman Wolfson had initiated, here's some pictures of it on our screens. We will be continuing this excellent event up at the Veterans Memorial Services Leisure Center, which is right between Pallaberty High School and Rogich Middle School. We'll have a combination of an old car show and a fancy car show, and trick-or-treating for the kids, and it's really a very good time, lots of folks out in the, in the west part of Las Vegas are already fans of this event, and we will continue it this year, second Saturday off, October 13th. I once had an astrology reading, I don't know if you knew that?
No.
It said I was born on the dawn of the age of Aquarius, and that's why I'm all wet. You may be able to do a better job yourself, and in that spirit, I mentioned the Sahara West Library, this coming Tuesday is gonna be starting a free astrology class, that, one of the many neat events they have out at that library, check it out. Councilman Ross asked that I bring Jocelyn Rodriguez to your attention, here's a picture of Jocelyn on our screens, she's been missing for about a week, 5'4", she looks like, well, the young lady in the picture, and probably carrying a small bag with her personal belongings. If you see her, contact Nevada Child Seekers, 458-7009, or Metro at 828-3111. Thank you, Mayor.
Always with a little tidbit for us, but those missing children, it's tragic, and so, anybody who sees Ms. Rodriguez, please follow those instructions. And I too, just want to encourage everyone for this Saturday to come out to the 20th anniversary of American Cancer Society's Making Strides Against Breast Cancer. What I have down, you're probably right, or correct, I should say, at 8:00 a.m., my little thing says here, 7:00 a.m., but I won't be there till 8:00 myself at the JW Marriott in Summerlin, so please come out and join us, this is a wonderful cause. Our next Las Vegas City Council meeting will be held here in Chambers on Wednesday, October 17th, and we will begin at 9:00 a.m. promptly. So thank you all for your support, being part of our great city, and my colleagues on the bench, and Mr. Gerbik, and everybody in our staff that participates in all of this, thank you very much, have a good week and a good weekend when you get to it. Thank you, we're adjourned.